Good evening, welcome to the regular Bellevue City Council meeting for November 7th, 2022. Councilmember Lee is going to be attending remotely tonight, so I need a motion to give approval for that.
I move to approve Councilmember Lee's remote participation in tonight's meeting.
Say it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we have roll call, city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Robinson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Newenhouse.
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Robertson.
I'm here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmembers on.
Here.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lee, could you please lead us in the flag salute remotely?
(laughter) (inaudible). 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 (inaudible).
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. We have two proclamations tonight. The first one is for Transgender Awareness Week, and Councilmember Barksdale will be reading this. And then we'll have Dr. Whitehead and our employee resource group accepting and speaking if they'd like to. So, go ahead, Councilmember Barksdale.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Whereas, more than a million adults in the U.S. identify as transgender or non-binary, totaling an estimated 1.6% of the adult population, according to a recent Pew Research survey. And whereas each year, people and organizations around the country participate in Transgender Awareness Week, November 13th through the 19th, to help raise visibility and awareness of transgender communities and address the issues they face, including prejudice, discrimination, and violence. And whereas, first officially recognized in 1999 after the murder of Rita Hester, a transgendered black woman, Transgender Day of Remembrance on November 20th is an annual vigil that takes place around the world to honor and remember all transgender and gender non-conforming community members lost to violence in the current year. And whereas, as of the writing of this proclamation, at least 32 transgender people in the United States, the vast majority being black and Latina trans women, were killed by violence this year, according to the Human Rights Campaign, which began tracking fatal violence against transgender individuals in 2013. And whereas, the City of Bellevue joins transgender people and their allies to educate the public about who transgender people are and the urgent need for resources to support and protect this community. City staff gather each year to recognize Transgender Day of Remembrance and read the names of transgender community members lost in our nation to violence. Now therefore I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, the Mayor of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim, November 13th through the 19th, 2022, as Transgender Awareness Week in Bellevue, and encourage all residents to join ceremonies and activities to raise awareness for transgender issues and recognize Transgender Remembrance Day on November 20th, 2022, as we join our community in reflecting on the unique identities and lives behind the community's transgender individuals.
Thank you, Councilmember. I think we heard the heavens crying while you read that. We have Dr. Whitehead, Carol Ross, Angela Ferguson, and Tonya Sparza accepting today.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Councilmembers. Thank you very much for recognizing this community of people. And I have a simple quote that I would like to read for you tonight, and it's from the founder of the Transgender Day Remembrance. And the quote really spoke to me, because it's very simple. And her statement was that transgender people should have the right to simply exist as themselves, to be their authentic selves. And in doing this, they should not be subject to any cruelty. And as we all know, thank you very much, Councilmember Barksdale, that it does happen. And I'm excited to announce that here in the City of Bellevue, with our Employee Resource Group, next Thursday, we will remember those from the community that has been lost. It will be internal, so it's for our family here, but you all can watch on Bellevue TV the reading of the names and the actual pictures of those who have been lost. Sometimes when we listen to numbers, it's just numbers, but when you see the faces, you will realize these were people who were loved by their families, by their friends. And it is a tremendous loss to our city. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next proclamation is a Human Rights in Iran and Everywhere proclamation, which will be read by Councilmember Robertson and accepted by Sakhar Amini.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas, the death in September of a young Iranian woman, Masa Gina Amini, after she was arrested for an alleged violation of Iran's strict dress code for women and detained by government's morality police, sparked widespread protests in Iran. And whereas, as news of her death spread, people began taking part in marches around the world, including in Bellevue, to demand more protection of human rights and freedom for women and for all people. And whereas, Iranian immigrants and refugees constitute an important part of Bellevue's diverse population. And whereas, we urge Iranian authorities to refrain from use of force against peaceful protesters and to investigate serious issues on the arrest and detention of Masa Gina Amini. And whereas, Bellevue stands with the people of Iran and supports the right of women and girls everywhere to be free from oppression and able to live without fear of violence or prosecution. Now therefore, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its City Council, do hereby proclaim Bellevue's support for human rights and freedom in Iran and everywhere, and condemn the use of violence to enforce policies that discriminate against women and other people. Signed, Lynn Robinson, Mayor of Bellevue.
Thank you, thank you so much. Zan, Zendeghi, Azadi. Woman, life, freedom. This is what the people of Iran have been chanting for the past 53 days in hopes of achieving freedom and living without fear, aspiring for just a normal life. Over the past 53 days, we have once again seen that the myths that were spread about Iran were just that, a myth. Hijab is not the culture of Iranians. Why would any government subjugate its people for something that it's their culture? We have also seen that the Islamic Republic is not reformable, and the change is coming from within by the people inside Iran. Bellevue is the adopted home of many Iranians. We are active members of the community, contributing to the economy and to the society, and there's no doubt that this has been a challenging time for us all. We live in a dual state of hope and despair, and seeing parallels between what's happening in Iran and here in our adopted homes. We see the fight for liberation and women's liberation in Iran and how that's a fight we have here in America, and how they are connected when we see our rights of bodily autonomy being taken away. Although the people of Iran are fighting for their liberty, those of us here must continue to amplify their voices. So I want to take this opportunity to say thank you to Mayor Robinson and this council for your continued support, for those of you who have attended our rallies, and for speaking to our community members, and finally, for the proclamation you have issued today, formally acknowledging the injustices happening in our home country and the pain we all go through. I also want to thank the Bellevue Police Department for cooperating with us, as we have been arranging for our rallies here in Bellevue for the past seven weeks, to assure that we are having safe events for everyone involved and for our other residents, although I should add, they could benefit from additional officers. We hope that the people of Iran will succeed in their aspirations of wanting a new government free of oppression and discrimination, and we will continue to do everything we can to make sure they do. I want to end with saying, with a saying in my mother tongue of Turkish. Az yasha, azad yasha, insani yasha, which means sacrifice and live short, but live free and live with dignity. Thank you for your time.
Okay, next we have approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the agenda.
Say it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have oral communications. City clerk, how many people do we have signed up?
Mayor, this evening we have 13 total speakers for oral communications. So I'll remind the public that oral communications is for a period of no more than 30 minutes, and speakers will be called in the order of sign up. Each person will have three minutes to speak, and only three speakers will be allowed to speak to any one side of a particular topic. Tonight is a bit of an unusual meeting. We have a public hearing on the budget this evening, so if your comments are related to the budget and have a budget ask, we would ask that you sign up under the budget public hearing. We did notice a handful of speakers signed up that we have moved to the public hearing. If I call your name and you intended to sign up for the public hearing, just raise your hand and I'll move you to the other list. And with that, I'll start calling our first speaker, who is Brigitta Witt. I believe Ms. Witt is here in person.
Good evening, and thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Brigitta Witt, and my family and I reside in the Lakemont community of Bellevue. And I'm here to share my concern and opposition to the proposed Isola development in Coal Creek. I know I'm not only speaking for myself and for my family, but for many of the residents in Lakemont who are opposed to building luxury homes in the middle of one of the most cherished and vital wildlife areas in Bellevue. My family and I settled in Lakemont four years ago, when I moved here from Chicago, after I accepted a senior position at T-Mobile. We chose Lakemont because it is still kind of one of the few really pristine areas that is densely populated by forests and expansive natural parks that I think have really been one of the reasons why Bellevue has its name. And it's also, you know, the Cougar Mountain Area Park in Coal Creek is one of the very first things that my family and I discovered after we moved here. The area is one of my, one of the favorite places where my son and his friends play, right? They're always at the Coal Creeks, they're always at that waterfall, and I think between the history of the area, the amazing trails and waterfalls, and also just the amazing hiking opportunities that it affords, it's really an urban dream, and it's one of the reasons that I think so many people choose to live in Bellevue. Just by way of background, I am a member of the Save Coal Creek Steering Committee, and I joined after recognizing and understanding what was going to be happening in that area in terms of the development. I was very concerned about the impact to the wildlife and to the history of the area, and also to just what I thought was a very small, narrow, thorough way that myself and many of my neighbors use very frequently to get to the 90, to get to Newcastle, and the impact that development was going to have on that. I am immensely proud of the work that the Save Coal Creek Steering Commission has done to galvanize over 4,000 voters in opposition to this development. We know that it's something that is really important to a lot of taxpayers and to a lot of voters, and the funding that we have raised to help us fight that fight is something that I think we're all very proud of and that a lot of folks within Bellevue have contributed to. I do want to say that I am very aware of the critical need for more affordable housing in this area. It's a vital need, and it's an urgent need that I think we all have to recognize, and we'd be foolish not to, as we're thinking about a development in this area. However, I do think-
Ms. Witt.
Yeah?
I apologize, your time has expired.
Oh, my gosh. Okay, well, that was quick. I didn't even get to the punchline, but anyway.
Send us an email. Send us an email that sums up your comments tonight, so we can read the rest of them, okay?
I will do, thanks.
You can also hand me your piece of paper, if you would prefer, and I can make copies. The next speaker on the list is Hal Ferris, who is joining us virtually. Mr. Ferris, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, your time begins now.
Thank you, Mayor Robinson, all members of council. I appreciate the time and commitment you make to the city. Our city is better as a result of your efforts. My name is Hal Ferris, my address is on record. I'm the Bellevue representative for the East Side Affordable Housing Coalition. I'm past chair of the Bellevue Planning Commission, member of the 2017 technical advisory group on affordable housing, and have advised nine cities in Washington and Idaho on affordable housing tools. The staff did a good job in showing what the cities around Bellevue have done and what has been successful in creating affordable housing. The MFTE program and implementation of C1 is and will make a difference. However, mandatory affordable housing is required for us to be successful in our efforts. Including an affordable housing requirement to any land use code change that increases capacity for residential or commercial development is a must. A pay and loo fee, deed and lieu option, or off-site performance are all options that can be calibrated for commercial and residential development. On-site performance is preferred, and for those that want to pay a fee, that fee can be calibrated as a premium above on-site performance. In all cases, the fee or performance requirement should be set to encourage development to the higher density allowed by a revised land use code. A change in land use code without affordability requirement will increase the value of the land and make affordable housing more expensive and in need of greater public subsidy. Can we increase the zoning capacity, include permanently affordable housing, and encourage new residential and commercial development? Yes, we only need to look to Redmond, Kirkland, Seattle, Shoreline, and many others that have done so. As part of the implementation of a mandatory inclusionary housing policy, the city should hire a third party to calibrate the performance requirement relative to the change in development capacity under consideration. That same party can calculate the fee option and lieu of performance. The parameters given to the third-party consultant should be vetted with a variety of stakeholders. I would volunteer to help in that effort. There is great opportunity in Wilberton to create a thriving neighborhood with pedestrian-friendly streets, a wide variety of housing choices, and levels of affordability. The comprehensive plan update now underway gives Bellevue the opportunity to look at all of our neighborhoods and find opportunities to increase our housing capacity and include permanently affordable housing throughout the city. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Jodi Alberts, who's also joining us virtually. Ms. Alberts, can you hear me?
I can, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, your time begins now.
Okay, great. Good evening, Mayor Robinson and councilmembers. My name's Jodi Alberts, and tonight I'm speaking in my professional capacity as head of Government Affairs for the Bellevue Chamber. I would like to thank city staff for their ongoing work on the Next Right Work Affordable Housing effort. This evening, I'd like to comment on the affordable housing tools being brought to council for informational purposes. A fee and lieu on bonus development could be a valuable tool to fund the creation of more deeply affordable housing in Bellevue. Of key importance is that a fee be calibrated in a way that does not disincentivize or delay residential development. Two critical considerations are, one, how this fee will interact with other affordable housing policies that the council may be asked to consider, and two, that the chosen mixture of policies is not damaging to the residential development market. It's clear that overall, development is cooling as several major employers reevaluate their workspace needs and as interest rates in the global economy increase pressure on market competitiveness. It is imperative that we maintain a healthy and lucrative development environment for projects to receive the capital necessary to get off the ground and for housing to continue to be produced. As stated previously, we at the Chamber are greatly concerned with mandatory programs, in particular with their ability to adapt to changing economic conditions. It's worth noting that nearby large cities such as Portland, that enacted mandatory inclusionary programs, have suffered significant declines in housing production. For example, in 2019, Portland produced 4,431 new units. In 2020, after the inclusionary program was passed, only 1,491 units came online, and in 2021, a mere 267 units were produced. This is a result which Bellevue must avoid at all costs. To determine these programs' impact, we support more analysis to evaluate the ability for these tools to perform in various neighborhoods. From the developer perspective, incentive tools such as the MFTE program, which is not noted in the attached staff report, have had a positive impact on increasing our stock of attainable housing. To evaluate such policies, we will be conducting and sharing our ongoing analysis of these and other tools that will impact both positively and negatively housing affordability in Bellevue. We will gladly share these findings with policy stakeholders throughout the process. Again, the Chamber and I are very appreciative of the engagement by staff and the council in seeking lasting and effective solutions to the housing crisis. Thank you for allowing me to submit my comments this evening.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Jesse Simpson.
Hi, thanks for the opportunity to comment today. I'm Jesse Simpson, Government Relations and Policy Manager for the Housing Development Consortium. HDC convenes the East Side Affordable Housing Coalition, which consists of more than 35 affordable housing providers, community service providers, advocates, and other allied organizations working throughout the east side and the City of Bellevue. We appreciate the City of Bellevue's efforts to analyze the effective policy solutions to advance housing affordability, and we're committed to partnering with you to meet the housing needs of our neighbors and significantly increase the number of affordable homes available to Bellevue residents. Bellevue faces a housing crisis. Home prices and rents have spiraled out of reach for so many people. This reflects Bellevue's basic desirability as a city and a jobs-to-housing imbalance that forces workers to commute long distances into Bellevue. To sustain itself, Bellevue must build homes affordable to its essential workers, the teachers, nurses, firefighters, police, and restaurant workers that make the city's economy and society function. Bellevue has a window to make significant progress in advancing affordability through this Next Right Work and Comprehensive Plan Update process. We have the opportunity to be a regional leader in addressing the housing crisis. I urge you to seize this moment to create a more livable, equitable, and vibrant Bellevue by adopting mandatory inclusionary zoning alongside broad and substantial upzones. When cities increase development capacity through upzones, a portion of that increased value can be captured for public benefit. Pairing an inclusionary zoning program with increases to development capacity, such as an allowable floor-area ratio, it's a powerful way to offset the cost of this affordability requirement and capture the added value for public benefit. Pairing affordability requirements with upzones leverages the potential of private real estate development, produces more affordable homes, and creates mixed-income communities. The flip side of this is that if an affordability requirement is not included at the time of the upzone, future efforts will be less fruitful, and the opportunity to capture public benefit is lost. Cities around our region have adopted mandatory inclusionary zoning as part of their housing affordability toolbox, including Redmond, Bellevue, sorry, Redmond, Kirkland, and Seattle. Bellevue itself had mandatory inclusionary zoning for five years in the early 90s, which produced more than three times as much as the bonus incentive program has in the 20 years since. In Seattle, mandatory housing affordability is generating well over $50 million a year in in-lu fees for affordable housing, and housing production has continued at the record-setting pace that it was before the implementation of MHA. The experiences of these cities shows that an appropriately calibrated mandatory inclusionary zoning program can both incentivize housing production and ensure affordability for low and moderate income households. Thank you for your time and your thoughtful engagement.
Thank you. The next speaker is Allison Evans.
Thank you for the opportunity to comment this evening. I'm here to discuss the Isola Plan development on Lakemont Boulevard in South Bellevue. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss just one of many reasons why the City of Bellevue should acquire the property to protect this amazing green space for future generations. And while this sounds like a NIMBY request, we certainly understand development must happen. We just hope to paint a picture of why these two parcels are extra special and should be preserved. So as you know, this property sits at the juncture between Cougar Mountain Regional Park and the Coal Creek Natural Area. So, if you look at a map, you have green space to the west, to the north, to the east of these two little parcels that are sitting right between all this green space. So building 35 luxury homes in this location would essentially divide two significant continuous green spaces into two separate parcels, and this would negatively impact wildlife in many ways. For example, bear, deer, and other mammals will experience a reduction in habitat size due to the restricted migration between the two parks. We are already seeing animals in our neighborhoods as a result of humans slowly destroying their habitat. So light pollution's a big deal. Many species rely on natural patterns of light and dark to navigate, to nest, to mate, and hide from predators. What is currently a large, dark-skY wilderness will now be bisected with bright lights from these luxury homes. Stormwater, of course, is also a concern. Shenix salmon, which is a threatened species, and coho salmon and other aquatic life downstream will be negatively impacted by stormwater runoff from these homes. And taxpayers have already invested millions of dollars to protect this habitat in the Coal Creek watershed. Yet our natural areas are dying a death of thousands cuts. Preserving large swaths of green space is a more effective way of protecting our local wildlife and the scattering of small green spaces, you know, throughout the city. So focusing on these large parcels has a bigger impact. Loss of these large, critical habitats happens slowly over time, cut by cut, and their loss is unfortunately irreversible. So at a bare minimum, Isola should be required to research these effects in a detailed environmental impact statement. The IAS checklist that they already submitted was incomplete and simply wrong in many instances. Please refer to the written response from Save Coal Creek and Sally Lawrence for more information on that. Thank you guys so much for being so proactive in protecting our valuable green spaces. Thank you also for considering working with King County to change Isola's mind, to put together a winning package of funds to protect this critical space. Appreciate that.
Thank you. The next speaker is Christopher. Randalls, who's joining us virtually.
I'm going to ask that we don't have clapping or reactions, but you can wave your hands if you agree, that's great.
Mr. Randall, Mr. Randalls, can you hear me?
Agreed.
Yes, your time begins now.
Awesome. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, city staff. Chris Randalls testifying virtually on behalf of Complete Streets Bellevue. I really wish I could join you in person this evening, but I'm helping my partner battle off COVID, so I'm happy to join you online to express our organization's excitement at the work transportation staff will be presenting to you this evening on the Bellevue Safe Access for Everyone grant application. The Be Safe grant proposal outlines a bold vision that will improve mobility and safety for all users of our transportation system, and it will be a significant contribution towards our city's stated values and goals of environmental stewardship, equity, and Vision Zero. If our city receives this federal grant, it will simply be transformational for our city's growth neighborhoods. The funds would help supplement King County and other regional investments to complete key trail crossings in Bellevue and improve residents and workers' connections between Bellevue neighborhoods and trails. It would bring 14 miles of high-protection bicycle paths, helping to complete our city's bicycle network and supplement strategic projects in these neighborhoods. And investments in improved crosswalk visibility and frequency will make our city a safer and more accessible place for people walking and rolling. Our organization was honored to sign on to the letter addressed to U.S. Department of Transportation Secretary Pete Buttigieg, supporting Bellevue's proposal, and we were delighted to assist staff in helping with getting other regional transportation advocacy and mobility justice organizations to sign on as well. Our organizations expressed our support, not just because of the transformational value that this proposal represents, but also because of how it's a reflection of some great work that's been done at so many levels of city government. From your body approving our city's Vision Zero policy and committing Bellevue to a future that will see zero deaths or serious injuries on our streets in 2030, to our city's federal lobbying team who have helped the city maintain great relationships with our federal delegation that helped pass the bipartisan infrastructure law, the staff who identified this opportunity and have really tried their best to seize it by putting together a great proposal. It really has been a great team effort, and we're so happy to support it. Should the City of Bellevue be lucky enough to receive these funds, we urge council to deploy them with urgency and to use them as a catalyst for further change. The proposal represents a great investment in our communities, but it must be just the start of a larger political and financial commitment to ensuring everybody in our city, regardless of how they get around, is able to do so conveniently, accessibly, and safely. We urge the city to continue to prioritize policies and funding towards connecting and protecting people who walk, bike, roll, and take transit, because these are currently the people for whom we are seeing the most significant gaps in infrastructure and safety. And although the work is not finished, we're so happy to be able to take this moment to stop and be excited with you. So thank you for your time, and we're really looking forward to staff's presentation.
Thank you. The next speaker on our list is Alex Zimmerman. The next speaker on our list is Alex Zimmerman.
Zihail, my dirty damn Nazi fascist ma bandita and psychopath. My name is Alex Zimmerman. I want to speak about something what is absolutely critical right now. I bring right now this my memorandum, because Seattle and King County right now, this is an epicenter of fascism in America. And I explain to you what's going on, because I read you what's happened. These seven, what is I call magnificent, seven magnificent don't have freedom of speech. Seattle Council don't have, King County Council don't have, Seattle Transit Board don't have, Seattle School Board don't have, Seattle Park Commissioner don't have, PCRC meeting don't have, Seattle City Club don't have. I call them damn Nazi Gestapo democracy fascists, and I have trespass from all these seven. From Seattle, for example, I have like a thirteen trespass. Last trespass, they give me the Jewish holiday in foreign October. So Seattle, this antisemitic city, I know this, a thirty-five free league. But the you not better? And I explain to you where it's different from you to them. What is you talking about? Where you establish this policy for thirty minutes and ten? People can speak. I remember this five years ago, you did this because you don't like what is I come and speaking. And I spoke this for thirty years. I remember time when you have a five minute. And who this did is absolutely idiotic. Look how many people inside. Where is your policy? Why you establish this policy? You are a fascist. It's exactly what's happened and exactly what as I told you hundred times before about this. What is stupid this? I never see like this before in my life. People clapping because they're civilized. You make something different. Who are you? Your goal is controlling. Is this exactly what is I call you? You're freaking Nazi Gestapo psychopath. You are mentally sick people. Give us America back. Stop doing this. Bellevue before nice civilized city. Look right now what has happened with Bellevue right now, under your control. So next year will be election. We need clean this chamber totally from this idiotic situation so we cannot clap like civilized people. Who are you? Why you quiet hundred fifty thousand idiot? And nobody talking about this. Talking about small problems, small problems, small problem, small problem cannot be without freedom of speech. We, America, when we will be a fascist government, it's different stories. It's exactly what has happened right now under democratic control. And you hundred fifty thousand idiot, very quiet about this. It's a problem what is I see here. Why I come every day for thirty years and speak about this? Stand up, America. America first, Constitution Trump.
The next speaker on the list is Raymond Norton.
Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, and council members, I'm grateful for this opportunity to speak. I hope that I can encourage you to help preserve the land, joining Lake Mont Boulevard, the Isola property. I believe it's a vital natural and cultural resource in east Bellevue. Currently, I participate in the Bellevue Essentials class, which encourages civic engagement in Bellevue, and I appreciate the many priorities that I know that you juggle. Bellevue's comprehensive plan includes stewardship goals. It states the goals of preserving and protecting high-functioning parks and trails. Large parcels of land for parks are no longer available in Bellevue, so the plan is to focus on target parcels to create a coordinated system of greenways and trails connecting open spaces. This twelve-acre property that we're speaking of could further that goal and benefit the city as a whole if it is preserved. It's surrounded by the Bellevue Coal Creek Natural Area and King County's Cougar Mountain Trail System. Maintaining a vital wildlife corridor here will strengthen the health of our natural connections while also saving the historic remnants of the mining community that once populated the area. Recently, I hiked the Coal Creek Natural Area with a friend who'd never been there. We read the interpretive signs and educating hikers about the history of the thriving mining community that worked there a century ago. And as we hiked, we noted the fencing that was just yards away from the trail and spaces marking the boundary of this land where thirty-five houses and three roads are proposed. We saw how close that development would be to this trail, and we considered the steep slopes going down to the stream below. This small parcel of land is like an island that could have such a positive effect on the whole natural area if it is preserved. It has seventy-three mature trees and numerous bird species. Most of you were at Bannerwood Park recently in October when I was among about seventy volunteers planting saplings. You value the importance of our tree canopy. Let's keep and preserve these mature trees that we have and that have grown on this site for decades. Constructing houses and roads on the site may cause erosion and sediment to damage Coal Creek at a time when we must do everything possible to protect our native salmon. I'm asking you to join the effort to preserve and incorporate this precious twelve-acre parcel, making it part of the Coal Creek Natural Area for the future, for us and for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Patrick Bannon.
So, city clerk, I tally that we've had three people speak about Coal Creek anti-development, so we won't be taking any more comments on that. But if you're here tonight to speak to that, you can always email us. And I think we have time for two more speakers, including Mr. Bannon. Is that correct?
We do, in fact.
Okay.
I'm going fast. My name is Patrick Bannon, President of the Bellevue Downtown Association. I'm here this evening to speak in support of the work to move ahead the Grand Connection vision. Grand Connection has been a part of planning exercises and documentation for probably five decades, and the work, the public investment, the private investment that has gone into bringing the connection to fruition in downtown Bellevue, long known as a pedestrian corridor, is reaping benefits. And now to see the investment opportunity move forward to hopefully bring to fruition a lid over 405 eventually, but first with the catalytic crossing across 405 that will connect to East Rail will be a transformative step for this city. And it may seem just like a piece of infrastructure, but there's symbolism in it too in bringing people together. The strength of our community is often measured in jobs and residents and tax dollars and tax expenditures, but I think the future of downtown Bellevue, the future of the community as a whole, will truly be measured by the connections we make, the literal connections we make between people, and then as our infrastructure is able to bring people together and enable those connections. So thank you for moving this work forward. The Bellevue Downtown Association has centered its strategic plan work around activating public spaces, and the Grand Connection's a big part of that. We look forward to being a part of its future. Thank you.
Thank you. The final speaker this evening would be Bill Finkbeiner.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, and members of the City Council. My name is Bill Finkbeiner. I reside in Kirkland at 401 Lake Avenue West. Before I get started here to talk about the Grand Connection, I just want to say I've had a real pleasure of getting to know some of you over the years, and every time I come to one of these meetings, I'm just so impressed. They can start with a little bit of negativity, but I just want to say that I think the community really appreciates the work that you do, that you're here on a Wednesday night and, you know, dealing with these difficult issues that have such a huge impact on your community. I just want to say thank you for that before I get started, so. And I'm here also to talk about the Grand Connection, my favorite topic along with the East Rail, as you all know. I'm so excited to hear that this section of the Grand Connection over 405 is moving forward and coming to fruition. The Grand Connection, and specifically this piece of it, hits all the neighborhoods of Bellevue and really by connecting to the East Rail, the entire east side community. It's a critical piece of infrastructure for bikeped connectivity in Bellevue, especially making this east-west connection to the East Rail. And with the bridge overcrossing East Rail, being able to safely, you know, cross from downtown to the future Wilberton neighborhood, I think is going to be just a tremendous amenity and really appreciate that you're looking at moving forward on this. Along with being a property owner and business owner in Wilberton, I'm also on the board of East Rail Partners, and so here speaking also on their behalf tonight to extend our support. East Rail Partners is excited also to partner with an emerging group of stakeholders that are in the very early stages of coming together to support and shepherd this project forward. And we know that together as a community, we can really make great things happen and bring this along on a similar timeline as the East Rail itself. So again, I want to say thank you for moving forward on this, and also again, thank you for the work that you do for Bellevue.
Thank you.
We have time for one more, since a couple of people were shorter.
Sure, if you would like to. The next speaker would be Pamela Johnston.
I would like to talk to you today about gaining three thousand five hundred acres of open space in King County for only eight million dollars a year. If you consider the public rates benefit system in category 143 of present use, there's six thousand three hundred forty-two acres, of which we pay forty-two million dollars each year, and they don't pay taxes on. One of those places is Willow's Golf Course. Willow's Golf Course pays less money than many other golf courses. In fact, there's several golf courses, Blue Heron Golf Course, Druids Glen Golf Course, Mountside Golf Course, Newcastle Golf Course, Stone Carley Falls Golf Courses, and Twin Rivers Golf Course, and Willow's Run Golf Course, all which take and are spared paying taxes on about thirty percent of their property, or seventy percent. I think I got that mixed up. Yeah, they only pay thirty percent of the property tax on the land use because of the current used project. So in category 143 golf courses, there's thirteen thousand five hundred thousand acres that don't have this tax benefit. One of them is our own Glendale Golf Club, which pays eighty-nine thousand dollars a year in taxes versus Willow's, which only pays, let's see, I forgot if I had that on. Sorry, I had printer problems today from lack of electricity, which only pays by nineteen thousand. I got that, I got that kind of mixed up. You have to do the numbers yourself, but relatively low compared to the one thousand eight hundred. Glendale Golf Course in itself felt like it had a high tax burden. I think that's how they decided to go ahead and do some multifamily housing on the corner of their property. So we have opportunity to take the way that the public benefit system, which was created in 1969 through an amendment to the state constitution, to have the same environmental stability that their perception is a little bit different than maybe ours is now, but they wanted public access, recreational trails, scenic resources, view corridors, and special animal sites. Anyway, this is an opportunity for us to gain some open space in King County through the public benefits rate system. Thank you.
Thank you. That does bring us to the end. We did have one additional speaker, and we have reached the thirty-minute mark, and Heidi Dean will unfortunately be not unable to speak, though I do believe she's here with us in person. I'd encourage you to email your comments to council@bellevewa.gov. That would close oral communications.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to all the speakers. So next up, we have a report of the city manager, Mr. Miyake. You're going to speak to us about the Grand Connection.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Robinson and council members. I do have one item, which is an update on the city's Grand Connection program. Joining us this evening is Jessie Kanedar, the city's Chief Economic Development Officer, as well as Pearl Lang, Public Policy Manager with Amazon, who will provide us an update on the current work advancing the Grand Connection vision. With that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Jessie.
Thank you, City Manager Miyake. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. Did want to acknowledge that Pearl is with us tonight to acknowledge this very special moment in the lifespan of this very special project, the Grand Connection. We heard from some of our stakeholders earlier in public comment, and just want to give you an update on the exciting work ahead to implement the Grand Connection. So one of the levels that we are talking about, the whole Grand Connection route from Maidenbauer Bay to East Rail across the core of the city. This has been a multi-decade project, as Mr. Bannon noted earlier in his comments. We're going to have some terminology changes as we work to bring the Grand Connection to fruition going forward. We talk about Phase One as that part of downtown from Maidenbauer Bay to City Hall. There's been a lot of great work to implement that part of the Grand Connection vision. The council has adopted the code and the design guidelines to help enable that vision to come forward, and there have been a lot of fantastic public and private projects along that portion of the route. Maidenbauer Bay Phase One, completing the circle, the northeast portion of downtown park, all contribute to that Grand Connection vision. Private development like the 555 Tower from Vulcan will contribute a signature pavilion along the Grand Connection that will be another great space. Amazon's Bellevue 600 Tower will also contribute significant public space and small business opportunities to the Grand Connection, helping it advance. And we've got the BDA that's been helping us do programming work for the last three years to help bring more people to the Grand Connection. Phase Two will be the Wilberton component. That's currently being worked on through the Wilberton project work, which will include the code work and be integrated into the comprehensive plan. As with downtown, it'll take a significant amount of private support and public support to help bring that Phase Two portion through Wilberton to life. But of course, we're here to celebrate a very signature moment on how we're going to be moving forward together on the entire route. So as we go forward into next year, you'll hear us talking more about the Grand Connection program as we work to manage the route holistically from Maidenbauer Bay to East Rail. We'll be working with our partners to increase the use of existing spaces, increasing programming, and streamlining operations where possible from Maidenbauer Bay to East Rail. But of course, we're here really to celebrate the city's work to accelerate quickly advancing our work over the highway crossing. As part of the budget proposal, the city has $2.5 million to move forward with design on crossing 405, and the city has completed a donation agreement with Amazon for a matching $2.5 million that will help advance the 30% design. And Pearl will speak to the importance of that to the business community in a moment. I want to frame up some of the work ahead of us. That 30% design is for an initial bridge that will cross 405 from City Hall to East Rail, and that is intended to be forward-compatible with a future lid over 405 that will house a park. That is part of the overall vision for the Grand Connection, but we feel that moving forward in a phased approach with the first catalyst bridge will be important. We'll also be working with Department Citywide to help make sure that other projects that the city has envisioned will be forward-compatible with both the bridge and the lid. Why are we choosing to move forward? The council knows this is an important project for the community. It will improve non-motorized access to downtown for our residents, our workers, our visitors, helping to keep downtown Bellevue the place where people want to be on the east side. We hope that the projects will help enable and improve the value of redevelopment in downtown and Wilberton as we go forward, and of course, as the city continues to grow, additional publicly accessible space and programmable space will continue to be important, and we believe that both the bridge and the lid will contribute to additional public space being available. Quick overview of how we're moving forward. This year, we've really been working on organizing both internally at the city and also with our private partners. In the coming year, you'll see information about an RFP for that 30% design of the bridge. We'll begin working with the Downtown Association and some of the thirty-five property owners and four government agencies on looking at operations along the route. In 2024, we hope to finalize the 30% design and then work with our partners to see how do we move forward together on construction of these signature crossing items, which includes identifying a variety of funding that will be needed to help bring that to fruition, and then a lot of other detail that we're still working out in the years beyond. We'll be back to the council in the first half of next year with some additional detail. And with that, I will hand it over to Pearl.
Thank you, Jessie. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, and City Council members. My name is Pearl Lang, and on behalf- My name is Pearl Lang, and on behalf of Amazon, I want to thank you and city manager Brad Miyake for the opportunity to speak before you tonight. Years before Amazon opened our first office in Bellevue in 2017, the city, along with community stakeholders, worked together to chart a bold transformative vision for the Grand Connection. And thanks to the city's foresight and leadership, Amazon was one of the early adopters of the Grand Connection design guidelines in our Bellevue 600 development to activate the pedestrian quarter along our building. Today, Amazon is thrilled to help accelerate the community vision to cross I-405 towards reality with a $2.5 million donation to the city to support the formal design process of a bicycle and pedestrian bridge over 405. We're pleased to also donate conceptual drawings and a bridge feasibility report commissioned by Amazon and conducted by Via Architecture and KPFF for the city to use at a discretion in this next phase of design work. Amazon supports this project for many reasons. First, this will be a major step to reconnect Bellevue's urban fabric and, as the city's Grand Connection framework states, heal the divide created by 405. The crossing will also become a signature and defining feature in Bellevue's landscape while serving as a catalyst for a new Wilberton urban neighborhood. A bicycle and pedestrian bridge over 405 will create a safe, enjoyable, and vital link between downtown and East Trail. Amazon continues to support and invest in new infrastructure as well as employee benefits to encourage employees to walk, bike, or take transit to work. And as you may recall, last year, we committed 7.5 million to close the funding gap for two portions of the East Trail in Bellevue. Known a city in the park, Bellevue contains almost 100 parks and a large network of biking and walking trails that provide residents with strong connections to the water and natural landscapes. We are honored to be part of this public-private partnership that will help increase connectivity to these resources within Bellevue and in the overall region. This donation is part of Amazon's commitment to the region as we grow our presence in Bellevue and the east side. And as a member of Bellevue's vibrant, diverse community, where many of our employees and their families reside, we are committed to partnering with the community and investing in affordable housing, promoting sustainable mobility options, and supporting local organizations. And in closing, I would like to thank KG Investment Properties, Lane Partners, Bellevue Downtown Association, East Trail Partners, and the Bellevue Chamber for their partnership. And our gratitude to Seneca, Via Architecture, KPFF, and the city manager's office and city staff for their support. This is the beginning of yet another exciting public-private partnership, and we look forward to working with the city and community stakeholders to bring this project to fruition.
Well, thank you. I speak for the entire council when I say thank you very much to Amazon for this amazing contribution and for being such a good community partner to Bellevue. This is going to have such an effect on really connecting Wilberton and the east Bellevue back to our downtown. And I think we welcome the private-public partnerships that we can create along the way that you're giving us such a great example of doing. And anybody who wants to become part of a partner on this project or wants to weigh in on the design can do so by contacting our cultural and economic development office. Thank you so much.
Thank you, mayor.
Okay, council member Robertson has just informed me she wants to say something at council business.
Yeah, if I may, you know, I hate it when we have public comment and we can't get to everyone. Our council rules allow us to put people who are frequent speakers at the end. And Mr. Zimmerman speaks and spews his hatred every single council meeting, which we have to listen to, he has a constitutional right to do it. But if we're bumping people who haven't spoken as frequently, then we're not using our council rules as the council intended them to be used. And I would really like us to start doing so. Thank you.
Any comments or a thumbs up? I'm seeing nods of approval. Okay, we'll bring that up. Thank you very much. Next up is a consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have a public hearing. It's our final public hearing on the 2023-24 budget and the 2329 capital investment program plan. Mr. Miyake.
Thank you, mayor, council members. Just by way of background, the previous public hearings were held on August 1st and May 23rd. Tonight, once the public hearing is done, staff will take any informational requests or questions the council has after tonight's public hearing, either tonight or anytime this week. The council would like staff to respond to at next week's budget meeting, which is scheduled, that would be on the 21st. So joining us to open up the public hearing for a few remarks is Tony Call, our director. And I'll turn it over to you, Tony.
Thank you very much, city manager Miyake, mayor, and deputy mayor and council members. Thank you once again for having us this evening. Again, we're about to open up a public hearing. It's to provide input on the 2324 preliminary budget. And as city manager Miyake says, at the conclusion of the public hearing, staff is seeking any areas for further council discussion or requests for information to bring back on November 14th. Just a quick reminder of where we've been in the last bit. You've seen this calendar several times before. Tonight, we're at the public hearing. Next week, November 14th, we'll come back to council and we'll be looking for direction to bring forward an adoption package back to you on November 21st. A quick recap of where we've been for the last four major study sessions. On September 26th, the city manager presented his preliminary budget. At that time, staff presented an overview of the investments and operations in capital and also noted that the preliminary budget includes two adjustments to revenue, one for business and occupation tax, a 0.01% increase in the rate. And the second, a property tax adjustment, that is 2% in total, 1% bank capacity, 1% council manic. And that 2% property tax equates to about $18 annually for a million-dollar assessed home. Oops, let me go back one more slide here, sorry. October 3rd, we had a deeper dive into some of the investments, including public safety. That included CCAT, Fire Station 10, transit units, and some others. Homelessness, the budget, the preliminary budget before you provides direction on the American Rescue Plan Act, spending that money in human services and small business recovery, and also heard regarding a clean and vibrant city initiative regarding garbage pickup, Adopt a Street. October 10th, we received a briefing on the utility rate information. Then that same evening, yet under a separate cover other than the budget, there was an affordable housing discussion. And during that discussion, we did talk a little bit more about the affordable housing investment in the preliminary budget. And then finally, two weeks ago, October 24th, development services rates were presented, including a policy adjustment to increase the land use recovery policy to 100%. Also that evening, we had human services commission recommendations. And then finally, investments in environmental stewardship and diversity equity inclusion. This is the actions that we'll take to adopt. And we'll go through this a little bit more in depth at the next meeting. I did go through them quite by item at the last meeting we had on October 24th. And with that, mayor, I turn the public hearing back over to you. Again, staff does seek areas for further council discussion or requests for information post the public hearing.
Thank you very much. So if it's okay with council, we'll go ahead with the public hearing. We can have comments and discussion after that. So is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
City clerk, do we have anybody signed up to speak at our public hearing?
Just a few. This evening, we have 38 total speakers signed up to speak during this public hearing. Before I start calling names, I will say that the notice of this public hearing was published in the paper of general circulation for the last two weeks. And also, the council has received 131 written comments on the budget, all of which are part of your desk packet this evening. With that, I will call out first speaker who's Guillermo Rivera. Looks like he is virtual. Mr. Rivera, if you can raise your hand and identify yourself so that I can see you. Okay, I'm not seeing Mr. Rivera. We'll move on to the second speaker who's Clifford Coffin. Mr. Coffin. We are going to move on to the next speaker who's Billy Heatherington. Mr. Heatherington, I do see you. Can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, perfect. Your time begins now.
All right. Thank you, mayor, deputy mayor, council members, and city staff. Included in several of those comments, probably in your packet there, are some thoughts around the support. And want to thank you for the support for funding for an apprenticeship utilization program, a funding line item. So as a member, I wanted to also thank you for listening to all the comments that Bellevue residents, members of the Seattle Building Trades, and myself have brought to you over the past year and a half to create a portion of a pipeline that will help our youth reach registered apprenticeship and have opportunities on projects in the city of Bellevue. Along with this, the Building Trades and others are committed to lengthening this pipeline by working with people like the Bellevue School District, working at Interlake High School to establish a state-registered pre-apprenticeship program. Our efforts are going, are not going unnoticed. During the budget discussions at King County, they are including a line item to help fund equipment and bigger facilities at Interlake High School. So this pipeline, with your help, has only begun to lengthen on the east side and in Bellevue in general. So I won't take too much time of your evening. I see you have a lot of people in comments. So I just wanted to thank you for your efforts and further conversation moving forward on this. Thank you.
Thank you. I do see Guillermo Rivera connected now. Mr. Rivera, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you, mayor, deputy mayor, and members of the council. My name is Guillermo Rivera with East Side For All. East Side For All is a racial equity and social justice organization based in east King County. We bring forward input from communities that are underrepresented on councils and other decision-making bodies. I'm here to talk in favor of Arch's recommendations regarding tenant protections. Tenant protections are an important part of our housing justice work to create more housing affordability and stability on the east side. We work closely with East Side Legal Assistance Program and other nonprofits who support community members from a range of racial and cultural backgrounds. In the recent poll in Bellevue, resident published, published in October 19th by Northwest Progressive Institute, more than 70% residents support changing city codes to provide more protections to renter. Nearly 50% of Bellevue households are renters. Many people need to continue renting for years to come. Many will never be able to own their home in Bellevue. With increasing financial strains, people are having to make difficult decisions to move in with their parents or with their adult childrens or just leave Bellevue because they receive a very short notice of rent increase or because they cannot pay the deposit to move in into a new place. Families want to live where they work, where they go to worship, where their kids go to school. And measures like these ones recommended in the Arch letter will allow people to continue living in Bellevue. Keep in mind that measures like these will benefit everyone. Every single family, regardless of their income, wants to have more time when rent increase is happening and prepare for the future with dignity and respect. These recommendations are common sense. Residents in Bellevue already say that they want it. Neighborhood cities have implemented Arch recommendations, like Redmond and Kirkland, and most recently, Burien. So I ask you to consider to approve the Arch recommendation. I know more protections are needed along with actions to make rent more affordable. I appreciate your time and want to thank you for the work that you are doing and considering policies through equity lens, considering who are experiencing the greatest hardships and most significant barriers to living in Bellevue. Thank you so much for your time.
The next speaker on the list is Ruth Lipscomb.
Hello, Mayor Robinson and members of the council. My name is Ruth Lipscomb. I moved to Bellevue in 1983 to take a tech job as a programmer on a spreadsheet project. I spent several years then in my career making tools for managing data and doing analysis. When I later began volunteering on community issues, I found that looking deeply and objectively at the data in any situation was always enlightening. I was often surprised at the insights and potential solutions that revealed themselves when I was open to changing my assumptions based on the data. As a city that prides itself on evolving to meet the changing needs of its residents, I ask you to look at existing data to help make those decisions. I have three data-related asks tonight. First, please fund an impartial study of the city's 911 call data by an experienced national partner. Find out which response options or combination of options by police and non-police units would best fit the needs of our neighbors, especially those experiencing mental health or behavioral health challenges. Many other cities, including here in King County, are updating their existing police responses based on best practices from across the country. Bellevue should fund an objective look at our city's 911 call and police CAD data to inform decisions around mental health crisis response. We should expect no less than first-in-class analysis from a city with our tech background. Second, please do a similar impartial analysis of the proposed transit police unit. There's ample time before sound transit light rail comes to Bellevue at the end of 2024. We will not be the first city to experience a light rail opening. So let's use the luxury of that time to do our needed homework. Please work with King County and other cities who will be hosting new stations and make sure that you're addressing real and documented problems backed up by the data. Finally, I ask you to consider the avalanche of undeniable data that our climate change will have bigger impact on our city in our and our children's lifetimes than anything else. Please fully fund the sustainability initiatives as recommended by People for Climate Action. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Valette Nolan, who is joining us virtually. Ms. Nolan, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you. And thank you, Mayor Robinson, deputy mayor, city manager, and the rest of the members of the city council for hearing me. My name is Valette Nolan. I live in the Somerset neighborhood of Bellevue. My family and I have been in Bellevue for over 47 years, and that includes my grown kids, their spouses, and my five grandchildren. I'm also the executive director for the Bellevue Police Foundation, and I'm here to publicly support the combined police and fire budget for 2023 and 2024, both as a private citizen and also in my role with the foundation. I want to thank you for all the hard work that you're doing for the city and at the time that you're taking to listen to these comments on everything related to our budget. So our public safety leadership team is in the position of safeguarding our residents, workers, and visitors during a period of unprecedented growth in our region. And along with that growth does come more incidents of crime, traffic, event management, and other calls on police and fire. They are asking for the staffing and the tools that they need to be able to do the best job possible and to respond to the upcoming changes in our region. We do need a transit unit to be trained and available when transit opens. We also need the community crisis assistance team to be up and running as soon as possible to help the most vulnerable in our communities as our city grows. We also need additional officers to respond to the increases in sophisticated crime rings that are robbing our stores and homes in Bellevue. I humbly, I believe that public safety is the underpinning of the success for every other priority you have in addressing homelessness, affordable housing, transit, economic growth, and stability in Bellevue. Please thank you, I'm sorry, thank you for your hard work and your support for public safety. Please show your support for your continued safety in Bellevue by passing the public safety budget as proposed.
Thank you. The next speaker on our list is Betsy Hummer. Ms. Hummer and the speaker after her have a PowerPoint to share during their three minutes. While we bring that up, I'll let you know, Ms. Hummer and Mr. Spies- While we bring that up, I'll let you know, Ms. Hummer and Mr. Spiezle, I'll track your time and let you know when you reach three minutes each.
Hello, I'm Betsy Hummer. This is Craig Spiezle. Thanks for listening to our comments on the public hearing. We are here to remind us that people in Bellevue deserve to feel safe and be safe. And our police department is committed to reducing crime and reducing the fear of crime. Our residents need to feel safe and be safe. This involves an investment in our future, in our city. What we're presenting tonight is a data-driven analysis based on our research in the budget and public records requests. We are asking that the council fund a minimum of 19 officers, including the Community Crisis Assistance Team, the East Link Transit Unit and the additional backfill resources. Bellevue is a city with lots of growth and with challenges. Over the last 12 years, population has grown 24, over 24%. And employment has grown over 19%. That was suppressed a little bit by COVID and work from home. And we've seen a 37% increase in calls for service since 2012. And those include calls for domestic violence, mental health, and just the regular service calls that our police department sees every day. In that time, just in the past five years, we've seen a 19% increase in crime. We all know that includes that rampant shoplifting and organized retail crime in addition to people that forgot to put mufflers on their cars as well as, and then we have increased community mental health needs and homeless-related issues. However, during that time period, the commissioned officers in the Bellevue Police Department increased only 3.3%. In addition to crime, factors impacting response times have included 911 calls for mental health and homeless calls, the vertical response time due to the high rises.
This slide really underscores how the population growth has gone up and how staffing effectively, staffing has gone down. So I think this is a very important data to look at and how we're really underfunding police in meeting the needs of the city.
That's police officers per thousand citizens.
You have reached the end of your first three minutes.
Thank you.
So next slide. So transit is a key issue and we look at right now. This analysis is very detailed, but in effect, priority one calls, the city of Bellevue has responded very effectively, a little over three and a half minutes. The challenge, as we go to the next bullet point here, is King County, who's technically contracted, their average call has been over 13 minutes. And what has happened is, in effect, Bellevue Police has become the de facto Transit Police Department. And again, this data here shows a combination number of incidents, calls and such, and again, no different than the data on employment, very suppressed because we know transit usage has been suppressed over the past two years. Next slide. So why we need transit resources? There are study after study that shows a very strong positive correlation of crime related to when transit opens up. It's also important to note that King County originally had signed up for 140 deputies, and as of this past week, they're only 45% of that plan. And while light rail is argued is not going to be operational for a year, year and a half, the starter line is really an important area for us to work on a transition. And it's important to note that it takes additional training time for transit alone, and a new hire takes nine to 12 months for training, and that's after we successfully recruit and hire them. So again, we can't be caught flat-footed here. So in summary, we really feel that Bellevue residents feel and deserve to feel safe and be safe. And this is both, we're asking for the support for the fire department and public safety requests that are provided before you. At the same time, I think it's also important that council looks at areas where we can cut back on the budget in different areas. We are faced with very uncertain times of inflation, recession and increasing layoffs that are facing our city today. And just between the levies that are being presented to voters tomorrow, there's a significant impact on a homeowner of roughly $475 a year. So I just ask council to direct the city manager to look at cutting nonessential programs so we can continue to live and work safely in our city and not tax residents outside the city. Thank you very much, and we look forward to your feedback.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker on our list is Anne Coughlin.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council Members, Mr. Miyake and staff. I am speaking about the needs also for more police. In order to accommodate Bellevue's growth and the consequences of the various state mandates which have been imposed on us last year, we need to increase our police force. We must hire at least 21 additional officers. There's been a 19% increase in reported crimes since 2017 and much, much more in unreported crimes such as retail theft and hard drug offenses. If we want Bellevue to remain a beautiful, safe city to live, work and visit, we should hire six to 10 officers to monitor the East Link Transit to accommodate the expected 52,000 daily riders. Most people, including myself, will not use the rail to visit our restaurants and upscale entertainment and shopping venues if the rail and the streets are not safe and clean. And I would really like to use it. And I know many people would, but if they're unsafe, it's just not going to happen. So the city needs to make sure that it is, if they want it, to be used as we're spending so much money to have it built. Sorry, let's not worry. We need to enhance our city by developing and adopting formal standards and metrics to address increasing litter on our streets and in our green spaces. Also, we need to develop and pass an ordinance to remove graffiti a short time after it appears. These changes will greatly ease the pain of the property tax increases we will be suffering and have suffered and on homeowners and help us feel that our needs are a priority to the city of Bellevue. Thank you for your time.
Your next speaker is Alexa Rare, I believe.
Thank you. My name is Alexa Rare, and I own a condo in downtown Bellevue, one block from downtown park. I've lived there for 14 years. I'm also a current member of Bellevue Police Department's Citizens Academy. Two days ago, actually, probably not even 48 hours ago, only 100 yards away from where Snowflake Lane will take place in a few weeks' time, while on my Citizens Academy ride-along, I witnessed the aftermath of the successful and safe disarming and arrest of a young man who had concealed a loaded semi-automatic handgun in his waistband. What I did not see was channels four, five, seven and 13 outside the location with reporters asking our mayor and our police chief about another shooting or hostage situation. This is because we have an excellent and well-trained police force. However, Bellevue's excellent police force is under strain. As you all know better than me, the 2021 Bureau of Labor and Statistics shows that the state of Washington ranks number 50, being the lowest, in its ratio of officers to residents. We have the least police officers per capita in the country. Department staffing levels have not significantly increased over the years, even though the city's population has increased significantly. The low police department staffing levels of today are not sustainable long-term. Of course, you do have a duty to provide policy and financial oversight for the police department, but I suggest that you have a higher duty to assure that they have the ability to continue serving their mission of making sure that Bellevue remains a safe place to live, work and visit. Please consider the families now and in the future, gathering along Snowflake Lane or at downtown park on the Fourth of July, or commuters traveling by light rail once it opens. The department's current staffing requests are about investing in the future, but this investment is needed now so that the department can initiate the recruitment and hiring of high-quality candidates and their thorough training. This type of investment will also help the city to retain its current excellent police officers by reducing the strain on department resources. It is their duty to serve and protect, but it is your duty to make sure that they have the tools needed to perform there successfully. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Paul Clark.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newhouse, Council Members, City Manager Miyake. My name is Paul Clark. I am a longtime resident in downtown Bellevue. I'm here to speak in favor of funding the proposed Bellevue Police Transit Unit. I believe this is essential to maintaining livability downtown and making the light rail a success. I moved downtown in 2002. I've been here 17 of the last 20 years. I currently live and run a small business in the downtown area. My primary mode of transportation is actually walking, so I've been able to witness the last few decades of Bellevue's evolution really from the, literally from the ground. And many of these changes have been for the better. It's not all doom and gloom. We've got great new options to eat, retail, places to play, appreciate culture, great parks. But sadly, not all the changes have been so fortunate. There has, of course, been more crime downtown, as evidenced by BPD's statistics. There's also been a significant increase in antisocial behavior down here. From my literally thousands of hours of walking around every block that constitutes the downtown area, I can tell you these incidents were once extraordinarily rare. In recent years, however, my family has seen brazen theft, public drug use, indecent exposure and disturbances of the peace on an almost weekly basis. We don't walk with our young daughter after dark as freely as we did a number of years ago. Now, I know a number of these incidents we witnessed don't involve people actively intending to do any harm. That untreated mental illness and addiction struggles are driving much of what we see. And our hearts go out to those in such difficult circumstances. I fully support CCAT and the efforts to get people the best help they need in these times of crisis. Nevertheless, these incidents, along with more conventional crime, do undermine Bellevue's long reputation as an exceptionally safe place. Now, is Bellevue safe by nationwide standards? Absolutely. But that is not my metric. Bellevue has been, can be and should be better. I've been pleased to see the Bellevue Police increasing patrols in targeted areas, hotspots downtown especially. Light rail, however, will bring new challenges to this already challenging public safety environment. If projections hold and light rail does add 50,000 new people per day to Bellevue, mostly downtown, we're going to need to ensure that they feel safe commuting to work and visiting. And downtown residents must be protected from spillover crime. It doesn't make sense to offload that responsibility for a secure light rail to other entities and to hope that they'll do as good a job as we know the Bellevue Police will do. Why give up control over something we know we can better handle ourselves? In conclusion, we need the light rail to be a success. The economic health of the city and downtown livability both depend on it. I urge council not to jeopardize light rail's arrival in Bellevue through a lack of investment in this key area. Please fund fully this vital new transit unit. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is James Fullup.
We'll take this speaker and then I think we'll take a break and then we'll resume our public comment or public hearing season.
Hi, my name is James. I live in Bellevue, just south of downtown. This is my first time speaking in a city council meeting. I'd like to speak against the amendment to create a transit unit with our police department. Before living here, I worked in community in New York City. Whenever I was leaving or entering the train station, there was almost always a police officer posted at the entrance with a bulletproof vest and a long rifle. I don't know about you all, but whenever I see someone armed in such a way, my mind starts to race. Is he looking at me so that today the day is going to have to use that? Why is such a show of force necessary? Needless to say, this is not how I like to start my day. Would this unit be stationed, would the proposed Bellevue unit be stationed similarly? Is this how we want everyone to feel when they use our transit system? Whenever I ride sound transit through Seattle, the only officer presence I tend to see is a security guard with stun guns. While still uncomfortable, it'd be my preference over a heavily armed police officer. I'm also having trouble understanding why such a unit is necessary. Is policing the transit system so different from serving the rest of our city that requires a dedicated unit? I'm also curious if there is data from other cities indicating there will be more incidents requiring police caused by the existence of mass transit. It seems like none of our neighboring cities, who already are part of the light rail system, have transit units within their city police departments. Why does Bellevue have to do this differently? Without persuasive data or precedent, I'm asking council to please not fund the transit police unit at this time. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to hearing from my neighbors.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to take a break till 25 till on the clock on the wall there. Okay, let's regroup here. We are on our 11th speaker. City Clerk, would you like to introduce the next speaker?
The next speaker on our list is Lorraine Stewart. Stewart, Stewart, apologies. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Lorraine Stewart. I live in Issaquah, but I often ride, walk and run in Bellevue. I'm here because between 2016 to 2020, people walking and biking were involved in only 5% of crashes, but they accounted for 51% of serious injury or fatal crashes. I was the victim of one of those serious injury crashes back in 2016 here in Bellevue. Have you ever thought you were going to die? I mean, like, really die? In the slow motion but split second between being struck from behind by a car going 25-plus miles per hour and losing consciousness, I thought I was going to die. I'll never forget that moment. By the damage to the car that hit me, you can get a sense of what the impact was like. And you can see some of my injuries represented here. I'm smiling in the pictures, but it's not because I was feeling great. I was smiling because I didn't want people to worry about me, especially my family. You can also see my family in some of these pictures here. The lives of every single one of those people would have been forever changed had that crash taken away my life. Although I'm back to doing the things that I enjoy, like riding, walking and running, the left side of my body will never be the same. I have permanent injuries, including a disfigurement resulting from surgery to repair internal damage to my backside. I asked the council to increase funding for Bellevue's Vision Zero Program back to the originally proposed funding level of $500,000 per year. Increasing the funding will give staff the critical resources to turn concepts and design into real-world improvements to keep our community safe. The difference between the current funding level and the original funding level is $143,000 per year. And while that may seem like a lot, consider the cost of not increasing the funding. What is the cost of resources to respond to crashes? What is the cost to the city for investigating and prosecuting crashes? And for the community, what's the cost of the lives of victims of crashes and their families? Are you willing to spend another $143,000 here to save a life? I hope so.
Thank you. The next speaker is Alicia Sebastian.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. My name is Alicia Sebastian, and my address is 14011 Southeast 64th Street, Bellevue, Washington. I am 14 years old, and I go to Newport High School as a freshman. In addition, I am a member and co-chair of the Bellevue Youth Link Climate Action Team. Climate change is a worldwide issue that I am very concerned Climate change is a worldwide issue that I am very concerned and passionate about. It is a problem that's affected millions of people. The real problem is that our society is creating climate change. When I was in fifth grade, twenty of my classmates and I flew to Hawaii and picked up trash on the beaches. This has inspired me to continue to help the world and take on different tasks, no matter the difficulty. I appreciate that Bellevue has gotten started on implementing our environmental stewardship plan. Implementing the plan quickly and effectively is really important for my future. As outlined in the plan, we need to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions fifty percent by 2030. Making sure we have enough staff is important because of the multifaceted effort that's required for addressing climate change. We need not only public education, but staff to help our community come together as one and change each other's perspectives. But also, there should be more staff to take on shorter-term actions and do the important research to figure out longer-term actions. Overall, we need enough staff to work on all these aspects of implementing the plan. Looking at our future from now, we need to take a change in order to reduce climate change. Individually, we can take on small actions, but as a community, we need to work together in order to take on bigger actions. Please do everything you can to fully fund the implementation of the environmental stewardship plan. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Pamela Johnston.
My daughter goes to Saint Thomas School on Medina, and last week I was giving tours of the school to perspective of new parents. Some of them told me that kids can leave their cellphones in a charger and no one takes it. They have no locks on their locker and no one takes it. They don't have those kind of problems. That's kind of the expectation when you set out at the very beginning saying, this is what we're gonna have, this is the community that we're gonna have, and be very, very intentional about your community. Bellevue tries to do that. It's a much more complicated system, granted, but I think there's some times that we, we go beyond our, our borders. And even though we say we don't want to be like Seattle, we, we forget about what is special about Bellevue. And what is, we need to do to, to foster and grow the garden that is our Bellevue. And the garden you pick and choose, you know, okay, this thing's not doing well, you change something out and put something new in. But you always tend the garden, and that's what I'd like to see with us. I'd like us to consider first responders in general as the most important thing. And Bellevue essentials, you know, it looked easy to take out a firefighter or a policeman here or there and get in some of your programs that you wanted, but at the end, you could see how much it would change the whole structure underneath. The second thing I would ask is that there's been some issues that have long, long set without much progress. Trees, signs, work, work at home, things that just need to get some work on, Airbnb, things that have got done at one point but still need like changes over time. And not forget about those small things. We need to really worry about collaboration and trust. So one of the things that we really, really want is trust. But to be able to have trust, we need to make sure that people feel that the government is caring, competent, and honest. That's where transparency fits in. So I want to make sure that we get transparency in. Also, don't look at the citizens as the banes of your existence, I guess. When I was working in software, testers found bugs. It bugged the developers, but it made it good in the long run. So I would like to make sure that you guys think about informing and collaborating with the public more. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on our list is Katie Wilson. Ms. Wilson is joining us virtually. Can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, your time begins now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hi, and thank you for hearing our testimony tonight. My name is Katie Wilson, and I'm the General Secretary of the Transit Riders Union. Our members live all around King County, including in Bellevue, and many of them depend on public transit for daily mobility. We are very excited by the coming expansions of our regional transit system in Bellevue and East King County, though, of course, we wish it would happen faster. I would like to speak on the proposal to create seven new patrol officer positions to patrol transit facilities, including the Bellevue Transit Center, park and rides, and light rail stations. We are concerned that this is not the highest and best use of the city's resources. We don't believe the arguments as to why these additional positions are needed are compelling. The research and data from other cities do not support the idea that transit brings higher levels or concentrations of crime. Several recent studies from West Coast cities have found either no change or reduced crime associated with opening new transit stations. There are also clear dangers to overpolicing and pursuing a public safety strategy that is over-reliant on armed police presence. According to the Bellevue Police Department's data, black people represent twenty-two percent of BPD's arrests and twenty-five percent of their uses of force, even though only three percent of Bellevue's population is black. These data remain consistent whether or not the person is a resident of Bellevue. Unfortunately, these are not unusual numbers. Interactions with armed police always carry the danger of racial bias and escalation. Taking a more nuanced approach to public safety around transit stations would be more consistent with Bellevue's racial equity goals. Sound Transit and King County Metro have been doing a lot of work with the many communities they serve all around the county to chart a new course for public safety on transit that is less reliant on armed policing. We encourage Bellevue to work with the transit agencies rather than committing now to funding its own police presence at transit centers. Funding these seven positions would cost the city one and a half million dollars per year. That is a lot of money. While we don't have evidence that these additional police positions are needed, we do have concrete data showing that the city faces other urgent needs, such as additional funding for human services and affordable housing. These funds could also be used to improve safety and access to transit facilities for people walking, rolling, and biking, to prevent injuries and fatalities in line with Bellevue's Vision Zero goals. On behalf of the Transit Riders Union, I ask you to view this proposal with a critical eye and redirect these funds to more urgent needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker on the list is Laura Gardner.
Hi, my name is Laura Gardner. This is my first time speaking here, and I am truly terrified. My husband and I own a home in Lake Hills on the 165th Avenue Demonstration Greenway. We have lived in this home for over five years. When our street became a healthy street in 2020, we felt encouraged to go for more walks in our neighborhood since we knew we wouldn't have to worry about car traffic. I love that the city initiated this experiment and then proceeded to use quick-build, low-cost treatments to further the concept in a more permanent way. My husband and I have worked from home over the past few years, and I see and hear cars speed past our house every day. One afternoon earlier this year, I was at the kitchen sink as I watched a car speed by. I said to myself, that was too fast. And a few seconds later, I heard three loud crashes as the car smashed into multiple parked cars in front of our neighbor's house. The family living there has since moved out. The woman next door to us, who has raised a family and lived in her house for longer than I have been alive, threw her arms up and shouted, this neighborhood is going to hell. I don't think the Demonstration Greenway project really changed our street much. It hasn't, it has done nothing to empower me personally to walk or bike around our neighborhood more. I'm so happy that steps were taken to improve the route for walking and biking, but for me, it doesn't quite go far enough. However, I will view this project as a huge success if it gives Bellevue the confidence to apply this approach across more of the city. Our specific neighborhood street has never been my biggest concern. Both ends of the greenway are streets on the high-injury network Bellevue has identified. The greenway doesn't connect safely to anywhere I need to go. I wish Bellevue would use the same quick-build, low-cost approach to roll out safety improvements to roadways in the high-injury network. For our family, a safe connection to the crossroads shopping area only one mile away would enable us to eliminate the majority of our car trips. I desperately want to be able to walk and bike instead of taking my car on such close trips, but the experience ranges from unpleasant to deadly, and I'm just not willing to take the risk. The reality is that people are ripped away from us in an instant just trying to get around in their daily life, and that is deeply unsettling to me and truly unacceptable in a place that absolutely has the resources to prevent it. Requiring a personal vehicle to participate in society is unreasonable. Improving our infrastructure to enable and empower people to get around safely without one is one of the most impactful actions we can take to improve the quality of life in our city for people outside of cars and for people driving. We don't need endless studies or shiny tech solutions. Plenty of cities have demonstrated exactly how we can reduce road fatalities and vehicle miles traveled by incrementally changing roads. I'm asking Bellevue to increase funding for Vision Zero to $500,000 per year so we can make real progress towards the goal of zero traffic deaths and serious injuries on Bellevue streets by 2030. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mary Ann Halverson.
Good evening. My name is Mary Ann Halverson. I live at 13701 Northeast 32nd Place. This has been our address for over fifty years. We've raised our two daughters here in a safe neighborhood without fears of crime. When they completed their educations, they chose to buy in the Bridle Trails neighborhood too and are now raising our grandchildren in Bellevue, a city with a reputation for, quote, "low crime rate and outstanding quality of life." We've been following the comprehensive plan and budget process remotely, and we're very impressed with all the work that's been done, and our thanks go to Mr. Miyake and his staff. Tonight, I'm here speaking in total support of the police department's 2023-2024 budget proposal as outlined on pages 283 and 286 through 286, excuse me. We know a lot has been done, but we all know the job is never completely done. I worked happily as a teacher for over thirty years, so it's natural for me to look to the future of our neighborhoods and the safety of our children. In just this year, an employee at a computer store told me they can no longer leave display models out because they are immediately stolen. While shopping at a grocery store, a siren went off. A store employee told me someone had just stolen some goods, but store policy is to not interfere. This is all too familiar to all of us. Driving by a thrift store, I noticed an entrance boarded up due to a break-in. A nearby rental company shared the fact they'd been burglarized, not once, but three times, with vandals escaping in moments with whatever they could grab. Then a couple weeks ago, two homeless men, unfortunately, got into a fight and one was knifed near 148th and 24th. These crimes impact us all. Ultimately, you and I pay for this monetarily, but more importantly, you and I are experiencing a gradual erosion of safety and our feeling of safety. It's notable that a men's shelter is being built, two hotels for the homeless are being built, have been bought, and much is being done. But I ask you to fully approve this budget for policing. These things I mentioned that we are doing are good, and they are cause for, but there is cause for concern and increased monitoring. At the same, at the time I ask for approval of the budget, I ask you go beyond this and add funds to make up for defunding issues and unintended consequences and unanticipated safety needs. In this way, we will ensure the police departments accomplish their number-one objective, and I quote, "to reduce crime and the fear of crime." We truly appreciate the council's leadership and your individual support for our hard-working police force. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Matt Jack, who's joining us virtually. Mr. Jack, can you hear me?
Hi, Ken, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. On behalf of the Bellevue Downtown Association, I'm speaking this evening to share a set of brief comments about the preliminary city budget. We appreciate this opportunity to convey feedback, and we are grateful for the city's public engagement process. The city has listened to its stakeholders, and it has been very transparent about the way tax increases are being proposed and how these funds will address both rising costs and city priorities. From the top, this budget accomplishes two things the BDA strongly supports. One, maintain services to match increasing demands from a growing city. And two, build on prior investments by advancing capital projects that'll yield lasting public benefits and enable strategic plans that have been in the decade, that have been decades in the making. This budget keeps the momentum going on priorities that are critical for a strong downtown, such as, one, multimodal network improvements that expand capacity, strengthen safety, enhance connectivity, and create more access. Number two, funding for long-term planning initiatives, along with economic development work for current strategies and vital funding for partnerships in placemaking and arts programming. Three, park funding for projects such as Maidenborough Bay Park Phase Two and resources to improve livability and recreation preservation and address the community's desire for more natural open spaces. Four, intentional public saving, intentional public safety programs with ample staffing resources for police and fire, notably Fire Station Number Ten. Five, increased spending to support the city's affordable housing strategy and funding. And finally, six, commitments to enhance efficiencies and provide resources for development review and permitting. We also want to convey that the city is not alone in navigating the next two years and beyond. The BDA, with other committed, with other committed civic and business organizations, will focus on scaling our work to meet the rising expectations and the pace of change in our economic landscape. We see an all-in effort to build and activate a safe, attractive, and thriving heart of Bellevue, a place of opportunity that will continue to benefit our entire city and the region. Finally, you have continued to lead us through these times of uncertainty. This budget tackles issues head-on and moves the city forward in its vision to welcome the world, celebrating our diversity. No budget can be full, can fully account for the future or handle every problem. However, you've earned the community's trust through a trans, through transparent communication and public engagement. We truly appreciate your care and commitment to downtown and the city. I thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. The next speaker is Wendy Tyner.
Hello, everyone. I'm Wendy Tyner. I'm from Wintergrass Music Festival. I live on Bainbridge Island, and I am so proud to be part of Bellevue and having Wintergrass part of you. We've been here now since 2010, after leaving Tacoma. And the purpose to speak tonight is to thank you for your unwavering support, for everything you've done for us this past twelve years or so. And what we've noticed is there's, I'm also aware that you have a hundred and fourteen minutes of people to speak, so I may not use my three minutes up tonight. But what we've noticed is, although we've received support from you of up to thirteen thousand five hundred and with a budget of, in 2012, we had a budget of four hundred and eight thousand dollars, and you gave us ten thousand dollars, which resulted in a 2.5% donation to our annual budget. But now, as we've noticed, is last year, the donation went down to sixty-two hundred, but our budget almost doubled to seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars, which turned out to be a 0.85% of our budget. So I am asking, on behalf of Wintergrass, for you to, you know, boldly increase the amount of money that you put into the arts grants budget, not only to support Wintergrass, but to also support all the other arts organizations. Many of us have received money every year, and then there are other organizations that don't receive as much money or don't receive money at all. And we talk about the economic impact and the social impact of what the arts organizations do for Bellevue. Our economic impact is 6.8 million dollars. 6.8 million dollars, that's just Wintergrass. And if you could put all of the other organizations together, you know, we are businesses, we may be nonprofits under a different tax exemption, but we are businesses bringing a lot of impact to this city that include jobs and retail sales and accommodations and transportation. But we also have those intangible impact, social impact items that we offer this city to. to. We offer places for families to go. We offer hope in this uncertain world. We have a place to go where you can learn music, you can listen to music, you can be part of, of, of the future of Bellevue, whether it's bluegrass music or any other kind of arts. And whether the donations are increased over the next year or two, Wintergrass is here to stay. We've been able to expand into the West End, outside of the Hyatt. We are absolutely increasing our footprint in Bellevue, and all of, most of our marketing dollars are going towards making sure every person knows that Wintergrass exists and that they can be welcome at Wintergrass at the end of February. Thank you. I'm sorry.
The next speaker is Al Rosenthal.
Thank you. I'm a longtime resident of Bellevue. I support passing the increase of 21 police officers, hopefully uniform and armed for Bellevue. Bellevue could use the increase in police. I'm sure you're aware of the huge homeless complex in Eastgate that you permitted. As you well know, it's low-barrier housing, which, as you know, residents are not restricted from taking addictive drugs or drinking alcohol. This is going to cause a huge shoplifting and safety problem in Factoria. In addition to the Bellevue police officers that you're committing to East Link Transit, you need to assign more officers to Factoria and Eastgate retail areas to stop shoplifting and to make the area safer due to the huge homeless complex that you have permitted. This is actually going to happen before the transit, so you're going to see a rise in crime there. I know because I've seen what the homeless in Redmond, downtown Redmond did. I have a building there, and I was on the homeless task force. They committed a huge amount of crime, an 18-bed shelter, committed two murders and other crimes. This is a way larger number of homeless. You need a lot more police in that area. In the past six months, the Bellevue Police Department have arrested more than 50 shoplifting suspects at the Bellevue Home Depot, just one store. And I'd guess there's probably, in a year's time period, there's probably a thousand or more shoplifts that go on in a store like that, and most of them get away. We have to have enough Bellevue police officers that we can encourage stores to call Bellevue Police Department when there is someone in their store that they suspect may be going to shoplift, so that Bellevue Police Department can have an officer outside of the store to apprehend the shoplifter and prosecute all shoplifters. Shoplifters and other crime in Bellevue will be reduced when criminals realize that Bellevue stores are not an easy target. I've actually seen this earlier this year in Crown Hill in Seattle where there's a large homeless camp that was moved next to a property that I own there, Safeway store that rents from me. And what I found out when organizing local businesses, Safeway wouldn't participate, but a outlet grocery store participated. And what, when I went in to get them to join the meeting with the North Precinct, I said, asked, you know, about the shoplifting problem, and they said, "We don't have a shoplifting problem." I said, "What do you mean? Safeway's a block away, and they're constantly being shoplifted. We don't allow it." And I said, "How do you stop it?" "We physically stop it." It was a franchise, and the owner's brother was the manager, and we don't want to have to have that. But what it shows, it shows, it shows that what they did is, they told me all the shoplifters go to Safeway because they're an easy target. We don't want Bellevue to be an easy target for shoplifters or criminals. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Vishnu Manjupudi. And Mr. Manjupudi, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, your time begins now.
All right. Yeah. Good evening, council members, and thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. My name is Vishnu Manjupudi, and my address is 1204 150th Avenue, Northeast Bellevue, Washington, 98007. I'm currently a freshman in high school, and I'm also a co-chair of the Bellevue Youth and Climate Action Team, where I've been a member for the past five years. I care about climate because, as an heir of our future world, it is extremely important for me and my generation to advocate for a cleaner and more sustainable future. I've worked toward sustainability through many different avenues, primarily through delivering testimony to the Bellevue City Council, organizing community-wide summits, and helping, helping organize collective youth action to mitigate climate change through Bellevue Youth Link. I would like to start by thanking you, the Bellevue City Council, for all the positive actions you have supported and taken towards the mitigation of climate action through both policy change and increased environmental advocacy and outreach, most notably the approval of and budget allocation to the Environmental Stewardship Plan, as well as the start of the heat pump campaign, the mobility implementation plan, and the air quality and planning guidelines project. I'm hopeful with, that with enough citywide and community-wide effort, we can get close to achieving our goal to reduce our greenhouse, greenhouse gas emissions by 50% by 2030. However, it's important that Bellevue provides even more funding for the Environmental Stewardship Plan and works quickly to achieve, achieve our agreed-upon climate goals. This means targeting the buildings and transportation sectors, where about 85% of Bellevue's current emissions are produced. Full funding for implementing the Environmental Stewardship Plan would help make public strength, transport even more accessible, create more bike routes and trails for residents to use for transport, and it would also provide other benefits. Some more benefits for, from implemented climate actions would include cleaner air, lower risk of negative effects from asthma, lower energy costs due to increased efficiency, easier ways to move around the city, including public transport, transit, biking and walking, as well as more green jobs. It is therefore imperative that we take action now to make Bellevue a cleaner and safer place for years to come. A livable climate is absolutely essential to the futures of youth in Bellevue and the whole world. We have to take strong climate action and provide an example to cities across the state and beyond. Please do everything you can to fully fund the implementation of the Environmental Stewardship Plan. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Allison House.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Allison House, and I've been a Bellevue resident for over 42 years. I care about this city, and I want to see it follow, following data-driven best practices to serve all community members as our world changes and evolves. My reason for coming here tonight is to ask members of the council to strongly consider funding a mental health crisis team that does not rely on a police response when it's not, when it is not warranted. The reasons that I believe that this is vitally important are many and are backed up by data from across the country, which I would be happy to provide later. Firstly, I would like to point out that a mental health crisis is not a crime. Over the years, police have been the primary responders to such emergencies because, frankly, there has been no other agency to do so. Police are available around the clock at very short notice, so it has fallen to them to be our first responders. I'm not here to denigrate our police or the skills that they bring when the occasion warrants it, but for many people in moments of crisis, the arrival of police with all the trappings of a rapid-response force adds further trauma to an already difficult situation. Across the country, and indeed in our neighboring cities, there are dozens and dozens of programs which are employing or have plans to utilize a community response model, as opposed to a co-response with police. Community responders can come from a variety of backgrounds, such as social workers, clinicians, EMTs, firefighters, and trained peer responders with personal experience of navigating a crisis. There are two elements of such programs that I would like to briefly address. One is the concern that responders will be exposed to possible violence, thus justifying the need for armed police to be part of the response. The programs that are in place have been studied by nationally-recognized agencies with academic rigor and thoroughness and have found to be overwhelmingly safe, not only for responders, but also for the community members. I'll be following up with an email containing data on this as well. The second element, which is closely connected to my previous point, is the critical importance of 911 dispatch protocols. In a carefully-designed dispatch program with appropriate training for all personnel, calls can be triaged so that those which raise concerns about potential violence can be dealt with appropriately, appropriately by police. There are various models for implementing this, including having counselors or clinicians be part of the dispatch team. In fact, it's been found that in many cases, caller's issues can be dealt with over the phone, and responder dispatch is not necessary. Apart from being a good outcome, it's also budget-friendly and has saved many thousands of dollars in existing programs. Absolutely no one is suggesting that community response is the answer to all 911 calls, but it has been shown time after time that in the vast majority of cases, it is the best practice and has the best outcome for members of the community who are in need of help. For these and other reasons, I urge all members of the council to study the facts in good faith and fund a community response team as part of the CCAT program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sally Fouchet.
Good evening, everyone. Before I get started, I wanted to say I stand in support of People for Climate Action. My name is Sally Fouchet. I have lived in the Eastgate Somerset neighborhood for 38 years now. Following a career in tech, I worked for the Bellevue School District at International School in the counseling office, and then went on to have a private college consulting business. Teens and young adults are my passion and my heart. I remain in close touch with many of my former students, now in their 20s and 30s, and this experience guides my ideas about the future. It is with them in mind that I speak. Bellevue's young people are asking us to address the mental health crisis with modern public safety solutions, and that is why I am here tonight to ask the city council to set aside money for a nationally-experienced consultant to do a data analysis of our 911 and CAD data to prepare to pilot and implement community responder teams in addition to CCAT teams. These teams could respond to some low-risk, non-criminal 911 calls for those in a behavioral health crisis. At least five of our neighboring cities, Bothell, Kenmore, Kirkland, Lake Forest Park, and Shoreline, are all in the process of implementing community responder programs and are entering into an interlocal agreement, which Kirkland passed unanimously this last week, the Kirkland City Council. More than 60 communities around the country have already implemented community responder programs. Some have nurses, EMTs, or firefighters as part of behavioral health specialists, and some even have mediators. It's important for me to note that I have a stepbrother and a precious nephew who are police officers. I have learned from them and other officers how we have overburdened police for too many years by relying on them to respond to so many of society's struggles, including behavioral health crises. Community responders are considered by many police departments as force multipliers, freeing up police to focus on their core work. Again, we have all heard so much about our, how our young people are struggling with mental health challenges. When an armed police officer responds to their home, that young person and their family get the message that their child's struggle and suffering is criminal rather than health-related. Let's do deeper analysis so that we have the right response at the right time, just like the public safety innovators in our region created Medic One to send the right response to a medical emergency. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. The next speaker on our list is Michael Moberly. I believe Mr. Moberly is joining us virtually. Can you use the raise hand function to identify yourself? Thank you. Mr. Moberly, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, your time begins now.
Good evening, manager, or mayor, excuse me, deputy mayor and council members. My name is Michael Moberly, and my wife and I are residents here in Bellevue. Additionally, I'm recently retired as the Director of Programs and Services for Congregations for the Homeless, where I worked in several positions, including case management and shelter management. I am here to ask the council to provide the funding and support the budget for the emergency services and specifically for the Bellevue PB CCAT programs. As you know, CFH works with the population that includes a significant number of individuals with mental health and substance abuse issues. While we do our best to work with these individuals and provide them with their needs to achieve stability, that's not necessarily always the case. There are times we need assistance from law enforcement to address a situation that is occurring, and I've been involved directly in several of these incidents. Previous to the CCAT program, when we called for assistance for a client in mental distress, the response always seemed to be several officers in uniform working to de-escalate the situation as best as they were trained. While many times they were successful, the presence of the uniformed officers in the gear and vests contributed to the level of conflict during the incident. Many times, the end result was a client was transported to jail or some holding facility. When the CCAT program was running, the response of a social worker with an officer dressed down in street gear changed that dynamic. The interaction with the social worker and the individual is much more relaxed, and the ability of the social worker to directly refer the person to appropriate care, something not immediately available to us, ended with the individuals either getting the immediate care they needed or obtaining referrals to such care in all the incidents that I was involved with. And this is not just for us. WPD relies and deals with other, excuse me, deals with other issues throughout the city, whether private or on the streets. I would suggest to you, the council, that the CCAT program should not only, is not only cost-efficient in the long run, but also provide a way for assistance for those who are suffering from mental health or substance abuse issues rather than placing them into a criminal category. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Heather Kelly.
Good evening, Mayor, deputy mayor, council members. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Heather Kelly, and I have lived in Bellevue for what seems like, at least to me, an astonishingly long time. My parents bought their home in Bellevue in 1975, where they raised my two sisters and me. My husband also grew up in Bellevue, and together we have raised our now 22- and 24-year-old daughters. One thing that I appreciate about living in Bellevue is how our leaders work to change and improve services and systems as our city continues to grow and diversify. The city leaders who create the Bellevue Police Department's Community Assistance Crisis Team, or CCAT, were motivated by the desire to find a new way to meet the needs of people in crisis. To achieve that goal, it seems they asked the question, "How can the police respond better?" The CCAT program, which pairs a police officer with a social worker, is a good answer to this question, but I think the wrong question was asked. A better question is, "How do we best meet the needs of our community members who are in a behavioral health crisis?" This is not an abstract question for me or my family. I lost a cherished cousin to suicide, and I have three very close family members who have attempted suicide. One has made multiple attempts. I can tell you that for my family, the answer to the question, "How do we best help the people we love who are in crisis," has never been having an armed police officer come to the door. A non-police behavioral health crisis team, often called community responders, made up of people trained in mental and behavioral health, have diverse backgrounds, including lived experience, would be the best answer to this question of how to meet the needs of people in crisis. I'm asking the city council to find room in the budget to fund a community responder pilot. Let's create a crisis response in Bellevue that truly meets the need. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Chris Marks. Yeah, Chris, Barbara, and then Court. Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, city council members, and city manager Miyake. My name is Chris Marks, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this evening. Bellevue's People for Climate Action, the Bellevue PCA, members and allies are glad to see that the environment- to see that the environmental stewardship budget that has been significantly increased in the 2023-24 biennium budget compared to 2122. We appreciate that the city manager's budget is now seriously attempting to address public climate concerns. In the last city council meeting, when Jennifer Ewing, the Environmental Stewardship Initiative manager, gave a brief presentation on environment-related budget allocations, we were in complete alignment when she said that the future ESI efforts will be focused on reducing greenhouse gas emissions in the buildings and transportation sectors. We remember that in 2021, those two sectors accounted for eighty-six percent of our community-wide emissions. However, we were very disappointed when the city staff slides showed that the future budget draft would allocate $7.3 million for sustainable improvements to city facilities, but just $2.8 million for sustainability work across the greater Bellevue community, where the vast majority of emissions occur. That's seventy-two percent for city operations versus twenty-eight percent for the community-wide emissions, a ratio of nearly three to one. We were especially dismayed when, in separate conversations with city staff, we learned that the current budget plans directed toward community-wide emissions reduction will not put Bellevue on track to reach the 2030 city commitment to reduce emissions by fifty percent. While staff has told us that the current budget plans would only achieve seventy-five percent of the city's 2030 goal to cut its internal admissions, they also shared with us that the draft budget would not even achieve a seventy-five percent reduction of the broader community-wide 2030 emissions reduction commitment that the city council has pledged, first in 2014, and then again in 2019. In other words, the current budget draft does not put us on track to cut community-wide admissions fifty percent by 2031, as the council has pledged. It's not even close. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Barbara Braun. According to Bellevue's 2021 greenhouse gas emissions inventory pie chart that is on the city's website, nearly a quarter of our emissions are coming from commercial buildings, a quarter from residential, and thirty-seven percent from transportation. That's eighty-seven percent of our emissions are coming from buildings and transportation in the city. We know the state's Clean Building Act is now addressing energy performance standards in commercial buildings over 20,000 square feet, so the really big buildings, the state is helping us to address. But the state has left to local governments to address existing residential buildings and commercial buildings under 20,000 square feet, so smaller buildings. In the transportation sector, we know that much work is needed at the local level, too, especially on reducing vehicle miles traveled. However, we don't find funds for such programs outlined in the current draft budget. According to the wedge analysis done by King County, and that you should have in the handout that came with this, we are really relying on local governments to play a big role in reducing emissions in buildings and transportation. Specifically, the King County wedge analysis points to reducing fossil fuels in buildings, reducing car trips, and increasing cleaner vehicles as major ways that the city should be working. Currently, Bellevue has no plans to address smaller commercial buildings not covered by the state. Instead, we currently have a consultant who is hired to provide free assistance to large commercial building owners to help them comply with the state performance standards that they are already required by law to do. Though Bellevue has recently partnered with neighboring cities to launch a heat pump electrification program for homeowners, that program is largely educational, and it currently provides very little incentive for homeowners to adopt heat pumps, and I know personally from the quotes that I've gotten. A broad holistic approach to home energy efficiency and electrification is needed, but it is not in the current plans. Cutting emissions from buildings will be slow to implement and take long-term programs to achieve necessary impacts. It is urgent that building programs be launched immediately in 2023 to reach our 2030 commitment.
Good evening, council members. You know me, I'm Court Olson with People for Climate Action. Thanks for hanging in there tonight. Got a few comments to add. PCA has been in dialogue with Bellevue's staff on details of the budget draft, and separately, PCA folks have been researching how other U.S. cities are cutting emissions in buildings and transportation. We developed a comprehensive plan for mending the budget draft allocations to fill the emissions gap not covered by Washington State actions, that is, those in homes, smaller commercial buildings, and in the transportation sector. PCA recommends switching the allocated percentages for sustainability work in the broader community with the city operations percentage. In other words, we recommend that the city spend at least $7.3 million on the broader community, where the citywide emissions inventory shows the emissions are coming from, and only $2.8 million on city operations. PCA has separately outlined its recommendations or recommendations in the 2324 Environmental Stewardship Budget for community-wide actions, which would go a long way toward achieving Bellevue's 2030 emissions reduction commitment. You'll find those attached to the handout that we've given you. In that attached handout, we recommended actions addressing the building sector that totaled $6,575,000, and actions for the transportation sector that totaled $3,150,000 for a grand total of $9,725,000 over the biennium. Based on our research of what other U.S. cities are doing, PCA is confident that this is a level of budget commitment that Bellevue must take up now to get to the 2030 greenhouse gas reduction commitment. So recapping what we've said tonight, seventy-two percent of the current budget plan is focused on cutting emissions in city government operations, with just twenty-eight percent focused on community-wide emissions, where the vast majority of emissions exist. Those percentage allocations should be switched. Their current plan does not put the city on the trajectory to meet its 2030 commitment for reducing emissions. State performance mandates for large commercial buildings do help, but the state's plans don't cover small buildings and the residential sector. Based on research of other cities, we know that more can be done. Finally, we just want to conclude by saying we appreciate that there's been considerable effort and attention given to environmental stewardship in the new budget, but much, much more needs to be done. We'd be happy for you to invite us into further discussion if you wish. Thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mary Pat Byrne.
My name is Mary Pat Byrne. I live in North Bellevue. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Recently, I was looking at the recommendations from the Arts Commission for the annual funding of artists and arts groups working in Bellevue. As many of you know, I held the position of arts manager for twenty-eight years and retired in 2015, and this annual recommendation process is very familiar to me. It's exciting to see the growth in the number and diversity of arts organizations applying, the range of experiences they offer the community, and the growing number of residents that they're serving. It's also encouraging to see how the Arts Commission magnifies the impact of this program by targeting funds towards strengthening the capabilities of local arts groups and towards stimulating the growth of arts in the Belred Arts District. It's also gratifying, very gratifying, to see that the funding level has grown from about $110,000 in 2015 to about $181,000 for 2023. Reading through the recommended funding amounts, though, it was surprising to find that many arts groups on the current list, who were also on the list in 2015, when I was going through all of the numbers and proposals, are recommended to receive as much as twenty-five percent less than what they were getting in 2015. It's actually to see one key reason why. There are a lot more funds, a lot more groups applying for funding, and artists maybe as many as twice as many, and also many more groups who are getting funds, also, again, almost twice as many as there were in 2015. It isn't, council has increased funding, and we're grateful for that, and we understand your very strong and consistent support for the arts over the years. It's just that the funding in this case has not kept up with growth. We know that artists enrich the community by sharing their talents with us and making an economic impact as well. In every single arts organization, you'll not only find community members gathered as audience, you'll also find them volunteering their time, their expertise, donating money to help support these arts groups. And this kind of community engagement builds community pride and loyalty, and that makes our city stronger. The city we want to be, a culturally vibrant city where diversity is our strength. City funding for artists and arts groups is an important tool that actually draws artists and arts groups into our community and encourages them to stay. This is fundamental for building our cultural infrastructure, which is, of course, the aim of the arts program and city's policies for funding the arts. As you consider the operating budget for the next biennium, I strongly encourage you to make a substantial increase in the funding for artists and arts organization that not only helps us keep pace with growth, but helps us gain ground in building our culturally vibrant community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Heidi Dean.
First, I just want to say what, how great it was to see so many people show up for the public hearing and see so much robust engagement on this budget process, and I appreciate all of you sitting here and patiently and intently listening to everyone's comments. I know it's a long evening. I also wanted to thank previous speakers such as Craig and Betsy and Anne, who came forward and spoke about the need for funding for Bellevue Police and Bellevue Fire, and gave data on that, so I'm not going to cover that ground, but I did want to point out people have asked about the need for transit officers. And just as a reminder, just in the last year, I'm going to go back to March of this year, when Alexander J., forty-year-old Alexander J. over in Seattle attacked a sixty-two-year-old female and repeatedly threw her down the stairs at the light rail station before strolling off, and then thirty minutes later stabbing a woman at a bus station. And then, within several hours later, he beat to death Brent Morgan Wood. He's now, and just as a reminder, that Mr. J. had just been released from jail, he'd been in jail for about a year, for what he did in my neighborhood in Newport Hills, in which he had rode the bus over from Seattle, from a shelter in Seattle, breaking and entering into multiple houses and menacing my eighty-nine-year-old neighbor. So transit does play a picture in that. Also, then, let's go to July of this year, in which, right across the street, twenty-five-year-old Gabriel Vargas Garcia beat to death wheelchair-bound sixty-three-year-old Eric Larson, right here at the Bellevue Transit Center. It was an unprovoked attack. So light rail and bus rapid transit, the expansion on 405, they will be bringing a lot more people into Bellevue. There will be a need for transit officers. Paul Clark was much more tactful about it, but let's just face it, sound transit's a hot mess and shouldn't be trusted to be in charge of our security, so I would feel much more comfortable with having our own officers. And I wanted to thank Betsy and Craig for pointing out the amount of time that it takes to onboard officers and get them up and trained. And one last shot, thank you for those folks that are plugging for the partnership, for the trades. I am all for that. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on our list is Sam Basta.
Mayor, deputy mayor, council members, thanks for being here tonight and giving me an opportunity to speak. My name is Sam Basta. I am a lifelong resident of Bellevue for sixty-four years. I have, I'm fortunate enough to own commercial property next to Bennerwood Park. I have a home in the Spirit Ridge area. You know, Bellevue has just changed so much, it's hard to really imagine what sixty years has brought, and it will continue to change. I applaud the city for making the difficult decision of bringing in a homeless shelter, building that is needed. I applaud the city for supporting public transit. It is a sign that we are truly a growing city and will continue to grow, and we're taking on the responsibility of what that means for our future. With it will come additional change, especially with transit and the shelter, and it is vital that we do everything we can to support our police. You know, I'm sure you're aware, and I hope most people are, you can't be a council member without a sense of service and duty, and it's not an easy thing. It's a long evening. I applaud you for being here and your work. In a similar way, I don't believe you can be a police officer without a sense of duty, and it's important that we fund them well and give them the tools they need, particularly enough officers and the revenues needed to do their job well and recruit good officers. You know, I mentioned my properties in Bellevue. My kids can't live here, it's too expensive. I don't know that once I'm, you know, my wife and I are gone, that they'll be able to afford the taxes. Budget's really, really important to me, and I know they're hard decisions that have to be made, but supporting our infrastructure, doing what we are called to do as, you know, city leaders, and supporting the least among us or those in most need is part of what we've been doing, and supporting our police is also important. So I'd just say, in terms of budget, it's a very, very good, worthy place to spend your money. So thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Kylie Schulman. Yes, we can hear you. Thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. My name is Kylie Schulman, and I live in Bellevue. I'm fifteen years old and a sophomore at Newport High School. I care about climate change since it is impacting every aspect of our lives as we live in this changing world every day. Climate change is an ongoing issue that can only be fixed with our decisive action. I have worked towards sustainability by working with organizations like the Sustainability Ambassadors to help rapidly advance a sustainable future. Thank you for your support with the environmental stewardship plan through increasing the budget. As outlined in the environmental stewardship plan, we need to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions fifty percent by 2030. In 2021, Bellevue spent only a fraction of what it's needed to implement the environmental stewardship plan, and I'm happy to see more funds allocated for this initiative. Full funding for the plan is essential for achieving our agreed-upon climate goals, as well as supporting the fight to make sustainability equitable. The city needs to work towards lowering energy costs, implementing easier and more accessible ways to move around the city, and ensuring cleaner air for people with health conditions like asthma. This work is complex and requires enough staff. I appreciate our current staff who are working as quickly as possible, and it is still important to note that we have more staff working on both short-term actions and longer-term actions. Bellevue needs to have proper funding for these staff planning, plans to be taken out. A livable climate is essential to our future, and the situation will only get worse if we do not act now. We need to take action on our climate as quickly as possible. Please help as much as you can to fully fund the environmental stewardship plan. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Christopher Randles. Mr. Randles, can you hear me? Mr. Randles, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, your time begins now.
Awesome. Hello again, council members. Chris Randles, again testifying on behalf of Complete Streets Bellevue tonight. And my comments in this section revolve around safety. And what we'd really like to impose on the council this evening is that, in our city, safety is multifaceted. As your body knows, how our roads and our built environment are designed determine how safely people can use our roadways. How our systems respond to the needs of people in crisis determines key outcomes that impact all of us. And how our city helps people meet their basic needs of food, shelter, and belonging impacts how people engage in the public sphere. Each of these arenas, our city entrusts our public officials to make data-informed decisions that respond to these needs with the requisite resources. For example, we know from data and studies that roadway infrastructure has tangible impacts on reducing the severity of collisions, especially for people who are walking, biking, and rolling. That is why our body is joining other community organizations like Cascade Bicycle Club and community members, who are asking that the city increase its budget for tactical roadway improvements through its Vision Zero program to $500,000 per year, the amount originally proposed upon the program's creation two years ago. Additionally, it is because of this commitment to data that we must strongly object to the draft proposal to create seven new armed commission police officer positions to patrol transit facilities. Not only have Bellevue Police not presented the community with rigorous data that show the necessity of transit-specific patrol officers, actual peer-reviewed and scientifically rigorous studies, not anecdotes, show that there is no clear link between light rail and crime rates. A 2017 analysis of L.A. Metro crime data over 27 years found, quote, "no evidence that new transit station openings result in changes in crime in surrounding neighborhoods," end quote. Further analysis conducted by that study's authors of the subsequently opened Expo Line to Santa Monica found no rise in crime rate around the station areas that was attributable to the opening of light rail service. This is just one relevant study in a sea of literature that shows that the fundamental assumption on which this budget proposal was founded, that light rail will bring crime and vagrancy in from Seattle, is unfounded. Committing these funds based upon absent data before light rail has even opened and before we've let Sound Transit allocate their own financial resources towards security and law enforcement is neither fiscally responsible, nor does it support Bellevue's commitment of being a good regional partner. If our city indeed seeks to reduce both crime and fears of crime, we must push back against harmful, unfounded narratives that do not aid either of these causes. Because our city prides itself on rigorous data analysis, we urge councils to not spend $1.5 million each year on a program whose need has not been clearly defined. We understand the challenges that creating a balanced budget brings, and we would note that many other city priorities that have undergone rigorous data-oriented review, but whose needs still remain unmet. For example, significant multimillion-dollar gaps remain in the city's human services budget, gaps that our budgets will not be able to cover long term. And despite our accomplishments and commitments to Vision Zero, our city is still seeing increased deaths and serious injuries on our streets. We urge councils to holistically consider its budget needs and really commit itself to data-driven governance in all facets of its financial planning. As proposed, transit police program does not meet the standard. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Matt Gleason. Oh, looks like Mr. Gleason is joining us virtually. Can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Yeah, hi. My name's Matt Gleason. I'm a Bellevue resident. I live near Crossroads. I also take the bus, like, every day. I use it to get to work, go to the gym, go to Seattle. I use it for basically everything in my day-to-day life. I heard about this plan to add new police officers to transit centers, and I just wanted to speak against it. I don't personally feel that my sense of safety in my community would be enhanced by having more people with guns and body armor in my vicinity all the time. You know, I just haven't... Haven't found that to be, like, particularly comforting. I don't really think it makes me any safer to be in the presence of, you know, weapons and people who are trained to use them. Yeah, I guess I don't have too much... Too much else to say. I think, you know, some of those... Some of those earlier scare-mongering anecdotes were pretty telling, like, you know, like if police have arrested 50 people at Home Depot for shoplifting. I think that's a great argument for why arresting people for shoplifting is not actually preventing it. It continues to happen. If you arrest another 100 people at shoplift... For shoplifting, are they going to stop? Or is the cause actually... You know, is there actually a deeper cause? You know, like, economic immiseration, instability, things like that? Seems clear to me that you're not actually going to address any of those problems by just, you know, having more exorbitantly paid people to throw them in cages and to menace people who maybe would be more likely to be accosted by the police, regardless of whether or not they're actually doing anything wrong. So, yeah, I think it just makes our public spaces very unwelcoming. It's very comparatively expensive. You know, some of those other anecdotes are involved people who have need of really serious mental health services, and we could actually be funding those. Like, we could be funding affordable housing. You know, we could be funding just other mental health services and actually addressing some of the root causes of these things, instead of just having, you know, more menacing people around, ready to maybe stop an extremely uncommon violent incident or create a lot more common violent incidents out of otherwise minor interactions that only become violent because there are police present who react to it in, you know, in that way, and turn what would otherwise just be a minor incident into something much worse. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Angelica Graham, and I believe they're joining us in person.
Hello, my name is Angelica Graham, and I'm here on behalf of East Side for All. We're a nonprofit organization that prioritizes racial equity through the advocacy work we do. My position as a community response organizer focuses on bringing a stronger sense of belonging for Black and Brown community members in East King County. I'm here today to address the budget proposal in regards to the Community Crisis Assistance Team Program. We strongly encourage that you allow more time for information gathering for the Behavioral Health Program, because there's a lack of important information to make a decision of this significance. First, the CCAT pilot does not properly address the impacts or efficacy of this crisis response model on Black and Brown community members. The list of stakeholders consulted in the CCAP pilot did not include community-based leaders in Black, Brown, and immigrant communities. And the pilot program report made no mention of culturally responsive approaches or linguistic access, despite the fact of 40% of Bellevue residents being born outside the U.S. and a majority of residents being people of color. We strongly urge you to gather input from community members with lived experiences and involvement in the community to ensure that their needs are being addressed properly. In addition, we encourage that a 911 data analysis is done to determine the actual need for police response versus a mental health-focused response. Realistically, a vast majority of 911 calls are not violent crimes and do not require police response, leaving it ineffective and unsafe to bring police to a scene that does not require their services. Through a 911 data analysis, you'll have a much better understanding of the actual needs for police intervention versus situations that require a mental health-focused response. Lastly, we urge you to consider adopting or piloting a community response model versus a coresponder model. The coresponder model calls for law enforcement to corespond on the scene along with community responders. We disencourage this, since law enforcement should only be engaged in situations where there's a clear threat to public safety or crime involved. This would center the expertise of a behavioral health team while allowing for police to respond or not respond as the situation warrants. Among the community members we support, there's a significant concern that having an armed officer arrive alongside a behavioral health responder creates additional unnecessary stress for the person experiencing crisis. We would like Bellevue to implement the option of a responder arriving separately and without the police when there's no need for police response. In this way, police officers can focus on calls that require police response, and community members aren't forced to interact with law enforcement when they are solely experiencing a mental health crisis. Your decisions are shaping the way Bellevue supports our community in crisis. More time and information is needed to develop an equitable and effective structure for these decisions prior to investing significant amounts of funding, prior to establishing an infrastructure that may not be the best fit for Bellevue. We ask that you honor your commitment to equity and inclusion and look inwards towards Black, Brown, and immigrant communities, who have the knowledge and expertise in cultural competency and community-rooted support. Please collaborate together and ensure the best outcomes for all community members.
Thank you. The next speaker is Joy Randall, who's joining us virtually. Ms. Randall, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you so much. Hello, council members, mayor, deputy mayor, and others. I really appreciate this time to talk. And I reside in the Overlake area and am a community volunteer for various mutual aid groups that support our unhoused and low-income community members in the region. I strongly urge you to not invest in seven more new armed police positions to patrol transit stations that are not even open yet. Why do people claim that transit equals crime, even when multiple studies have disproven this? Why do so many of us, including public officials, promote and associate fear with increased public transit? Is it because most people who utilize public transit are predominantly poor, low-income immigrants, Black, Indigenous, or people of color? What's clearly proven are the dangers posed by police on transit systems to exactly those communities who rely on public transit. A previous caller had already stated, but it's worth repeating again, Bellevue Police Department's own dashboard shows 22% of their arrests are of Black people, plus 25% of their use of force, despite only making up 3% of Bellevue's Black residents. Whether they're even a Bellevue resident or not, the arrest rate remains consistent. Why are public dollars going to more policing when there is a crisis of affordable housing, food insecurity, underemployment, minimal mental health care, essentially a drastic lack of resources for social and human service programs that are what truly decrease crime? Public safety is a community that is well-resourced, not overpoliced. This sounds like more an opportunity to blow a police budget based on unfounded fear perpetuated against overpoliced, vulnerable communities who rely on public transit. Community-based programs that provide the needed resources for people and a community responder program that does not use armed police is what a city that wants to be a good regional partner invests in to ensure safety for all. Whose voices are you truly listening to? Do your actions revolve around the needs of the people who mostly rely on public transportation or to the presumed whims of those who don't use transit to survive and believe the unfounded fear that transit brings crime? Are you truly looking at what public transportation should do, who it serves, and who is it failing? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. That does bring us to the end of our pre-registered list. At this point, I would ask if there is anyone else joining us this evening who would like to make comment to the council, please raise your hand. Okay. Ma'am, please come forward. If you could state your name for the record, please.
Some of you may know me, Marlene Meyer, without my mask on here. I reside in Bellevue. And I'd like to say thank you tonight. I agree with others who have said this is a tremendous night for you all to be listening to all of our comments. So, thank you so much. I'd like to break my comments, actually, into two areas. I wasn't going to speak at all tonight, but I've been very impressed with two particular topics. One is on the side of the police support. I've had police come to my house and be very supportive in certain situations. We had what we thought was a break-in, and it turned out not to be, things of that nature. I've also had police come to my house because we were having problems with my son in running away, problems at school. And respectfully, they were helpful in finding him. At one point, he, like a lot of young kids sometimes do, run off. But they told us that we need to learn how to be better parents. And another police officer was going to be sent out because my son was having difficulties at school. And they said, if he doesn't come in, they would send the police officer out. And I said, my son is, you know, not a criminal. So we found out after several counseling that he is... Sounds like apparent bragging, but brilliant in one respect, and that he probably would not be helpful at the school system here. We spent our retirement fund to send him out of state because we couldn't find anything here. And he is now graduated from school, president. He is managing homes in North Washington for homes for special need programs. You know, just kind of giving you perspective on the police being helpful and not helpful. So I'm just saying I'm in support of looking at supporting police, but also, we really need to look at some mental health situations in this state. In my last 30 seconds, I am in support, very much, you know me, I've been involved. We really need to get going on environmental support in the ways that we know can be helpful through buildings, transportation, and look at the whole picture, not just in the one box. But can we build smaller homes? Can we look at what to do and give people ways to actually afford it? I've had people tell me we can't do solar amongst all our pine trees. So what can I do to help in this situation?
Ms. Meyer.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. That does bring us to the end. I don't see any additional hands.
Okay. Well, I just want to thank everybody who participated in this process. It's really... We appreciate it so much. We've taken copious notes of everything you said, and now we're going to have a little discussion of our own, but we're going to take a break, and we will resume at...
Mayor.
But first, I'm going to close the public hearing. So, is there a motion?
I move to close the public hearing.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Okay. Now, we're going to take a little break. We'll come back to this topic of the budget. We'll resume at, how about, 5 after 9, according to that clock. We're going to go ahead and... Can I call this meeting to order again, please? Thank you. We still have a lot of things to cover today at our meeting, and so I'm going to ask for the people in the community to give us a chance to do that, please. So, we just heard a presentation from staff. We heard comments from the public. And now, I'm going to encourage our council to provide comments to the staff requesting information on the budget. So, I'm going to, you know, it's... This is not a time for a long discussion. We're not making any decisions tonight, but if there's anything else you need to know about the budget in order to help in your decision-making, if we get to that next week, this is the time to do that. And if you don't get everything out at this time, we can email and do that publicly, allow the public to see those emails, and we can also meet with staff and get any information we need. So, Councilmember Zahn, I'm going to start with you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the community for all of the comments, right? We got over 100 written comments, and then tonight, I don't know, I think it was well over 35 comments, both in person and virtually. I think that it's really important to hear from the community. We have a very large budget, and we are a growing community. And we know that when we build our budgets, we're very thoughtful about making sure that we're not actually just taking care of the business of today, but making sure that we are a growth-oriented budget. Now, with that said, I do have some asks of staff to try to understand, and that is on the Environmental Stewardship Plan. What I heard from the community is, while we appreciate the fact that the budget is envisioning that, and I'm going to frame it this way, that the city is taking the lead and stepping up first for, you know, that 73% of the budget for us to work on our own municipal greenhouse gas reductions. I can also hear from the community that, wait a minute, this doesn't seem very balanced if then only 23%, 26% is available for the community reductions. So I guess my question is this: What would it look like if we were to create a bit more of a balanced budget between what we're spending ourselves in municipal and the community? And I guess my...
And I guess my, my ask also more globally is, where is more likely the funding from either the state or the federal or the county? And can we align where, where we're putting our money so that it becomes seed money for additional funds from other sources? So, if ultimately you come back and say, actually putting it this exact way that we have it actually positions ourselves to get more funding than pivoting to more of a balance of municipal versus community, I'd like to understand that part, if you could look at that. And also, how it might impact the wedge analysis that was done that shows that we are not meeting our trajectory towards the 50% reduction. So, I would like to understand that. The second one is, I appreciate the Vision Zero discussion, because I do remember and I see, you know, our amazing transportation folks out in the audience as well, that we did move forward and pull some monies from these coming, upcoming years so that we could start some of the Vision Zero work a little bit earlier. And I would like to better understand what it would take to get back to the $500,000 a year on Vision Zero, whether that actually better positions us to, to go after even more grant funding, to do some of these high incident spot improvements in our community, because we heard a lot about public safety tonight in our community. And I think that the, the public health or public safety piece has a lot of transportation pieces associated with as well. And I feel like coming out of COVID, I don't know about anybody else, I feel like I'm driving like a grandma, because everyone's passing me on the road. And so, to the degree we can do more to do, to calm the, the transportation piece and keep people safer, I think that would be important. And I think I probably exceeded my three minutes. I'll stop for now, and we can go down the line.
Thank you. Councilmember Robertson.
Thanks. I join Councilmembers on and thanking the public for the robust and comprehensive engagement. It's nice, it really feels like we're back, right? We have lots more people, excuse me, coming and engaging. I have three questions, which I'd like to, which if you can answer tonight, it's fine, but otherwise, maybe next, when we come back. So, the first is about the police budget. I 100% support the police and fire budgets as proposed, particularly with regard to the new hires. I think it's really, really important that we fund the police. The budget funds the positions. The actual design of the programs in which those positions are utilized comes later. So, I, I think that's correct. The, Mike, but that's not my question. We have a number of vacancies right now in police, a number of vacancies in police. Sorry, I'll speak up. We have a number of vacancies in our police department right now. I know the budget includes those positions, which means we can afford to fill those positions. But I'm wondering whether we need to add additional money to fill, recruit, and train the new hires. We, it's a very, very tight market for police LEOs right now, and I want to make sure that we can not only fill the vacant positions that we have and fill them rapidly, because we need them not just today, but yesterday, but also make sure that we can fill the new positions that we are creating. So, I'd like to make sure that we have enough funding. So, I'd like to have a discussion of that next time. Second, I'm wondering if we could add more funding to art and if there's a suggestion from staff on how we might add a little bit more money to the art funding. I think that that's, I think Mary Pat Burns made a very good point, as did Wendy Tyner, if there's money in economic development or something for that. Finally, park levy. We have a very important election tomorrow in King County, and I'm wondering if we will have, if, assuming that the good people of Bellevue pass that levy, whether we will have time in this budget to adjust the funding, to take into account the extra resources. So, those are my three questions. Thank you.
And I'm going to ask that we postpone the answers till next week.
Yeah. And that's fine. I just wanted to get them out there. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to call in Councilmember Lee next.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Oh, wow, it's a wonderful participation by the community. It's amazing how much committed they are to come to talk to us. And I think it shows two things. The staff's done a good job in being transparent and getting the information out there, to get the community informed, and the community's engaged. And obviously, the community is very engaged to come up and talk to us about issues. They must be very important, and we know they are. So, I'm very pleased. Yeah, this is, you know, being on the council for so long, this is indeed probably the biggest budget comment that we have received in one setting. So, I want to thank everyone that's here. We may have different opinions, and, but, you know, we heard a lot, and some of the opinion may, may change based on the information that we heard. And I just want to be precise and without much time. And I don't think I would cover everything. It's not possible, because that would probably take me an hour. So, I would just come to the ones that really stood out for me, that I would really like to dig deeper into it. But it doesn't mean that I don't want to, I, I'm not paying attention to the rest of it. I'm still going to go through it very carefully, with fine tooth comb, and then we'll talk some more. I know time is short, but I think this is important, so we need to pay lots of attention in discussion. My, my one thing that stood out for me is, I appreciate Betsy Hummer and Craig Speesel's chart. So, I like to have the staff maybe take a look at it and making sure that the numbers correlate, and we are indeed, how do we address those? Maybe make some comments. We, everybody insists that data is important. And so, if we have data, does it really correlate to what actions we're taking? So, that's first. And the second is, I agree with the Councilmember Robertson. We talk about, you know, we need to be looking at economic development, but we have a very successful program that's bringing a lot of people here. It's more than that. It's also generating a culture that's very interesting for young people. You know, people communicate art culture, music especially, not especially music, it's very important. And we are bringing cultures together. You know, Pacific Northwest is not well-known for, for bluegrass, and especially during the winter time. We bring bluegrass to Pacific Northwest and having young people of different cultures from all over the world that's going to learn about each other through music. I think that's very important. So, I really support, we need to maybe look at supporting the program and looking at us program in general. So, I'd like to take a look at what, what, what the staff can, you know, give us some ideas and some further discussion. Another one is, I'm really impressed with Michael Mobley, retired CAHS case management program, you know, regarding the CCAT proposal program. And then, you know, it's a perspective I think we need to know more about. So, I like to understand that better. You know, 25 years ago, when I first came to the council, the police chief was saying, we need to have a more community policing. So, this is really the community policing model we're doing. And I think we're, we're doing that. I think we agree to that concept. The problems are how we implemented, that's the key. Now, we're struggling through, we're, we're implementing it. So, we're, we're still learning. We're in the very beginning stage of it. So, I don't think that we are going in a different direction. I believe we're in the same direction, except we may want to implement differently. I think you still need to, because we heard from the last speaker that her experience varies.
Councilmember Lee.
Police office automatic.
Councilmember Lee, can I ask you to limit your comments to just what you would like staff to look into, please?
Also, I like the staff, well, okay, if you don't want to hear my reason, that's fine, but I'm just giving you a little bit of perspective. But I'd like to know more about the, the, for example, following speaker, Heather Calley mentioned, I would like to see, we put, we do a pilot program in how to do this right. Basically, it's model of community policing. Okay? That's, that's it. I support what we're doing, but I would like to take a look how we can do it better. Okay? So...
Talking about the CCAT program?
Yeah. The proportion of how much do we do climate change for, for the city buildings versus in the public versus what we do for the public? And I, I think that is a very good concern to explore that. So, I just touch on whatever the mayor gave me time to talk about, but I have lots more I can talk about, I'd like to add. So, just give you a warning, city staff, you'll be hearing from me. And thank you.
Councilmember Lee, can we clarify with the community policing? Are you thinking about the CCAT program when you say that?
Yes. Well, that's what I'm referring to.
All right. Just wanted to make sure.
Michael Mobley, he talked about the CCAT, and Heather Calley talked about the CCAT.
Okay.
We need to have a pilot program.
So, I think we had one, we had a pilot program, but we can give you...
No, no, no.
More information about it.
That's why the problem is. We seem to know, that's our definition, okay? This is more than that.
Okay. I'll give you a chance to speak to staff about that.
Well, I can explain to you if you want me to, otherwise...
Nope, I'll let you do it over in your own time. Okay, so, I'm going to quickly...
Not my own time, all at one time.
I'm going to quickly...
I have to talk to myself.
Councilmember Lee, can you please stop?
Well, I'm just responding to your statement.
Oh, my gosh. Okay.
You make a statement, you ask it, I respond to you.
I'm going to ask staff if they can provide additional funding for the arts and how we might be able to do that. And I'm going to ask staff if they feel that we need to increase the funding in Vision Zero in order, order to meet our goals. We have specific goals with Vision Zero, and I'd like the input on whether they think we need to increase the funding in order to achieve those goals. Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I too would like just to echo the, just a great response by the community. So, many great comments and input over the last, you know, since we started this process, and since the community's had an opportunity to look at the initially proposed budget by Council, City Manager Miyaki. So, really appreciate all the thoughtful emails and some letters, and even tonight, the, the public comment in person or virtually is much, much appreciated. So, four things for me, and some of these we'll, we'll touch on what my colleagues have mentioned already. Vision Zero, I too would like to understand what the impact of that reduction in funding means to meeting our goals. Wintergrass, when you look at the impact that it has on our community, and especially our business community, when we're trying to get through a pandemic and we want to see more people coming into downtown, coming into our hotels and eating at our restaurants, et cetera, you know, perhaps a little bit additional investment there makes a lot of sense, given Wintergrass's long tradition here in Bellevue. Let's see. Also, on the, on some of the comments by the People for Climate Action, I believe Court Olson had mentioned as well, some of others, just about that balance between municipal buildings and, and business or community buildings. I would just like to understand Jennifer Ewing's or the, her team's thinking about that balance, you know, kind of that one-third or two-thirds. Just, just want to understand that a little bit more. I'm not saying that balance is not right or not correct, but I, I just want to understand what her thinking was for that a, as we look at our environmental stewardship initiative. And then, also, just want to echo Councilmember Robertson's comments about recruiting police officers. And we've always had a great reputation for hiring the best officers in this city, and we have been very competitive. But I'm growing increasingly concerned that other cities have become very aggressive in terms of going after the same quality police officers as, as we are. We once, and still do offer, as far as I know, the 16,000 signing-on bonus, but other cities in the area have well surpassed that. It's 20, 25, 30K. And they're offering other incentives as well on top of that. I know that we have at least 10 to 15 open seats or vacancies right now. Are we going to be able to remain competitive in this environment if it continues to be so aggressive? I'm not saying we're not, but I would like to see a little bit of data showing that, because with the open vacancies and with the additional police that we, we want and need to hire, are we going to be able to do that? It's one thing to put in the budget, but if we can't recruit and actually get them and then go through the training process, where does that leave us? So, that's another question I'd like to have answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Berksdale.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I'll start with saying that I support the comments that have already been made around understanding the implications of providing additional funding to the arts, as well as Vision Zero and the environmental stewardship balance, so understanding those implications. In terms of CCAT, I think I've raised it before. One of the gaps that I believed we had in the pilot that I would love to see us better understand is a behavioral health-only response, as well as, so basically, what would that cost to, to pilot that program, as well as what it would cost to have our 911 and CAD data reviewed to help inform what percentage of calls could be responded to from a behavioral health perspective? On the transit unit, I raised the question previously. I, I really am still struggling to see the need for having a transit unit. I think the, the points that were raised earlier point to mental health, point to broader challenges that, that we may see in the broader community and not specific to transit, which I think we're addressing with the already proposed increased headcount for police, as well as mental health, the CCAT, and the behavioral health services, if we can get that pilot. So, I would be interested in understanding what it would look like if we delayed this. Light rail's not going to come overnight. And, and the interim, do some work to understand, better understand the need, because right now, I, I'm not seeing it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And Councilmember Stokes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This, I should put it on green. Yeah, thanks. I, I appreciate being at the, at the end of this, because I, I think people have raised issues and questions that I had as well. In fact, I'm, I'm very pleased at the cohesiveness in, in our discussions here and what we want to look at. I mean, at one point, it looked like we were off, going off in different directions and things, and I think this has been a very, very good process tonight. I, I agree with basically all the different things that have been said, and this is what we're working on. But I do want to particularly talk about the, the police funding and where we're going. I've had very good conversations with individuals and, and the community and all, with the, the chief and others and all. And I think we're on a very good path. The, the funding is there, the program, the overall piece, it's, it's, as we said, it's, we're not voting specific dollars to go do specific things right now. We're in a process of, we're, and I think, you know...
Hey, Councilmember Stokes, I'm sorry. Can I just direct you to make your comments to what you want to hear from the staff? Like, do you have questions you want the staff to answer for you? We can opine on the pros and cons of the budget next week, but right now, we're kind of trying to take the input from the public and direct comments to the staff on what information we need to get more on.
Well, I don't want to back and forth, because I think that's a little more of what we, what has been talked with. But I, I think the questions have been answered. I think I particularly want to hear more, the questions I have is responsive and what can the staff recommend, particularly on arts funding? And I would like to get into more, you know, discussions in detail on that. I want to ask, see what staff's response is to the questions that have been raised on the, the whole police funding and questions that Councilmember have asked on, on all these other issues on the climate change and all that. I mean, it's, it's, I think what I was saying basically was, I think we've asked the good questions, and they're there. But I just wanted to have, since everybody else has put a little bit in terms of what they think, you know, looking at this, I wanted to do that, too. So, we're fine.
Okay, great. Thank you. So, anybody have any other comments or questions they want to ask?
Mm-mm.
Okay, Councilmember Zahn.
We did have one more question related to, we did...
We did have one more question related to, we did hear from some comments from the community that we'd like to have some more detailed outreach to our community around the CCAT program. And what I'm wondering is, and I think it was in one of the item 49 in the bank, where we were talking, I was asking about the communities of color coordinating team and whether there were some recommendations for policy or funding. I guess what I'm trying to understand is, is there funding within the budget to do more outreach to the community? So as we are moving forward with CCAT, what I, what we had heard from the community is that maybe we hadn't had as, in our pilot, we weren't able to do as broad of an outreach as we might have wanted to, and I just wanted to understand whether, within our budget, whether it's in the CCC or within the funding for CCAT, whether some of that outreach funding is incorporated already. Thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Lee, any other comments, questions? We'll move on to the next question.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to know whether you would like to discuss a little bit further about my thoughts on community policing, because there seems to be a disconnect when I was talking about pilot program, you're thinking about CCAT, and I was talking about community policing. I don't, most people figure out we need to talk about community policing. It's like taking away from the police. That's not why I remind, it's not defunding the police. It's actually having people in the police department have the capability of community policing. That means the attributes of the people who know how to work with mental health situations. Well, however you call them, it's not what, you know, we have to talk about. So do you want to talk about that, or we can wait?
No, I'd rather wait on that.
So that we get on the same page. So I'm going to stop there.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have, is it two or three? Three, well, I know, three study session items, two for discussion, one is just in the packet. So let's start with the first one, Mr. Miyaki.
We could just move ahead with, the first topic is just an informational update on the Bellevue Safe Access for Everyone, also known as the Be Safe Program. Safe Streets for Roads for All, it was the grant application that was referred to earlier today, which is pending before the United States Department of Transportation. Joining us for a brief presentation is Genesee Atkins, our Chief of External Affairs, Katie Kusin-Bahalzy, Transportation Policy Advisor, both from the manager's office, and joining them is Franz Lohnhouse, the Mobility Planning and Solutions Manager. With that, I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to Genesee.
Wonderful, thank you, City Manager Miyaki, and thank you, Mayor, and Deputy Mayor, and Councilmembers for your attention tonight. We know this is a big meeting, so we're going to keep this very compact, but we're very excited to be in front of you with an update on this important federal grant application as well as our larger federal issues approach on federal funding opportunities. I'm joined tonight by my colleagues, Katie Kusin-Bahalzy and also Franz Lohnhouse, and we'll jump right in. The next slide, this is just an update for your information on our ongoing interdepartmental work on federal funding opportunities and a real case study of what it looks like when the stars align, one of those opportunities really ripens for us. I'll go ahead and turn it over to my colleague, Katie.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Councilmembers, Katie Kusin-Bahalzy. I'm delighted to be back with you today. You may recognize a piece of this slide from back in June. We talked about the BIL, the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law, and the opportunities that the city of Bellevue could capitalize on. Well, I'm here to report to you that the BIL's birthday is next week, which means we still have four more years of this five-year program left to go. Let me tell you a quick reminder of the BIL. It's $1.2 trillion, and there's, it's broken into two different programs. The larger portion of the program is existing surface transportation programs for FY '22 to '26, and then the second bucket program is for new formula funding, competitive discretionary grant programs, including programs such as Safe Streets and Roads for All. Now, on the graphic over, the bar chart over on the right, you'll see that that is comprised of different buckets for that new formula funding. The dark blue shows that most, if not, more than half of the funding is for transportation, but that doesn't mean it's only transportation. There's also airports and ports, there's resiliency, and there's also high-speed internet. So let me tell you a little bit more about how we've progressed. So when we came here a few months ago, we talked about putting on running shoes and putting on that helmet. That has since been done. We have had a few months of our established BIL interdepartmental team. We meet every three weeks. We've got staff from over eight different departments that meet on a regular basis because those are the departments that are most, have the most opportunity to benefit from BIL. We have a resource library where we track all of the grants that are applicable or all the training opportunities, and we also do a lot of communication. We also developed a project pipeline and grant program list. You'll see an example of the Excel spreadsheet on the bottom of that slide. There is a lot more data to it than just what's shown on that screen, but what we really try to do is work together to identify which projects around the city we can really prioritize in terms of status, in terms of funding amounts, in terms of project readiness, and also use lenses such as equity, climate, and partnership to assess whether we're ready for different programs. Another thing that's not on this slide is our grant program list, something I'm particularly excited about. As I think I mentioned a few months ago, there are hundreds of grant programs, but only a smaller portion of those are available for local governments. So what we do as a team is we assess all of those grant programs that are ready or available for local governments, and then we assess whether we have the projects that would back it up, whether the criteria is something that would be applicable for us if there's a matching fund. So there's really just a hand-in-hand partnership between the BIL team and all the data that we are looking through. And then finally, as you're going to hear later on today, we really grow relationships. And with that, because there's limited time, I'm going to pass it over to Franz.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers. As Katie made reference, the BIL team has played an instrumental role in guiding how we approach the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law, and in this calendar year, we had confirmation as staff that we should pursue the Safe Streets and Roads for All SS4A discretionary grant program because Bellevue's plans, partnerships, projects are very well-aligned with the USDOT National Roadways Safety Strategy and its commitment to a safe system approach to Vision Zero. And because of our longstanding commitment to Vision Zero, we are very well-positioned to pursue implementation grants, and that's not the case for most communities that haven't gone through this robust, outcome-focused process that you all have helped lead and that we in turn have followed on. As reflected, in 2020, you approved a safe system approach, 36 strategies that guided the development of our strategic plan, and annually, we have, with the Vision Zero steering teams oversight, developed annual action plans. And the 22 Plan, which we presented to you back in April, includes 19 activities, one of those being pursuit of grant funds. So when we set about this task of developing our Bellevue Safe Access for Everyone Be Safe proposal, we took a data-informed approach. We confirmed that the number one priority for Bellevue is responding to vulnerable road users. People walking and biking, as was commented on earlier today, represents approximately 50% of all fatal serious injury crashes despite being only 5% of all crashes. And having that clarity, then we set about determining what you are, if you to focus on, and you can see in the yellow area that we're zeroing in on those neighborhoods of downtown Wilberton, Belred, Crossroads, which represent just 12% of our land area. However, you can see the statistics there. This is where there's a lot of people walking and biking and taking transit, and what's not reflected here is the 30,000 new jobs, 27,000 new residents coming online in this geography by '25, and of course, in '24, the five new light rail stations that'll be here. So this is where we're focused, and these are the kinds of strategies and projects that we're targeting for that area. We are, there are 13 projects and strategies, but they really can be grouped in these three categories. In partnership as a joint application with King County, completing the most visible, most active portion of East Trail between Southeast First and Fifth Street is a big part of this. A whole host of complete streets installations throughout that geography, including on-street bike lanes, mid-block crosswalks, rectangular rapid flashing beacons, and then building on the robust technology partnerships we've had underway for many years now, a series of innovative practices. Those include a collaboration with Sound Transit, applying that video intelligence at those four at-grade light rail crossings, and then also working with T-Mobile, Qualcomm on some cellular vehicle-to-everything technologies that were showcased in Seattle Times article last week. What you can see in the upper right quadrant are the application participants. This is moving forward as a joint application with King County, with financial contributions from Sound Transit and others. In total, we're bringing $10 million in match, and we're seeking $40 million in USDOT. Funding also reflected in the lower-left quadrant are the myriad letters of support received, and at this time, I'll hand it off to Genesee, who will speak to other support that we've received.
So when the decision was made in the summertime to pursue this opportunity, that this was really going to be something to go for, we also started talking about what we would do to buttress the work that would go into the application itself. And so we talked with our federal consultants, Washington Two Advocates, and we talked about planning a lean and mean group of folks to go to Washington DC to meet with federal officials to really help elevate our application and try to ensure its success. So in the first week of October, the mayor and Franz and I went to Washington DC for two very action-packed days of meetings. Here we are in this photograph with the Deputy Assistant Secretary of USDOT, Charles Small. We met with him and his associates to discuss the work that's been ongoing for several years, as Franz mentioned, here at the city of Bellevue, in support of safety and that systems approach that USDOT has really gone all in for. We also met with all the members of our congressional delegation and their staff, got some really good feedback from all of them. Of course, they signed a joint letter of support that we included in our application and transportation staff at the National League of Cities. So we got really positive feedback and constructive next steps ideas from all of them, and we brought that back here to Bellevue. Well, one of the only meetings, the only meeting that fell off of our schedule while we were there was with Chair Jennifer Homendy, the head of the National Transportation Safety Board. She had to go down to deal with Hurricane Ike in Florida, understandable, and so she actually offered us the better part of a day here in Bellevue when she was already planning to be in the Northwest. And so just last Monday, we hosted her for most of the day in a multi-part event that started at City Hall with a little bit of a mini-walking tour with a lot of our partners from the Chamber and the BDA, from some of our financial partners, Sound Transit and others, and then continued over to the T-Mobile 5G hub, where we really talked about a lot of the technology tools and applications that we're bringing to bear and a lot of the community connections. It was a really great place to bring some of those community organization voices there to talk about the real-life impact that the deployment of these tools can have. And then finally, to wrap us up with next steps, the timeline that we think we're looking at for this grant, you know, they haven't, as Katie said, this is just its one-year birthday, they haven't done this before, and so they told us they received over 800 applications for this grant program. So they are busy right now sifting through a lot of, I'm sure, very strong applications, ours of course being hopefully at the top of the list. They will then move this up to the secretary's office later this fall and then hope to make announcements in January. So we are really hoping to hear positive news in January and have a lot of other little kind of touchpoints and drumbeats that we're doing right now to try to very gently continue to elevate our application and its support up to decision-makers. We're really excited about the front-page article that we got out of the Seattle Times last week. This is the way you want to show up in the paper, and this is a great illustration of what it looks like when one of these strategic opportunities really does show up for us. You heard Katie talk about how we try to be really poised and ready for this, and it means that we really, when we go after one of these opportunities, we go hard. So we're really excited to be here. We know you are tight on time, so we're happy to field questions here or later. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any comments or questions? Kate, Councilmember Zahn.
Yeah, I just wanted to make one comment. I just think that our staff is amazing, and, you know, I do think that we're poised-
I did this. Oh, they laughed.
Okay, I was like, I'm missing whatever the laugh is supposed to be, because, I mean, the staff has been working on this even before the applications came out, because I remember the workshop that was done for Vision Zero in January in DC where Chair Homendy wasn't able to come in person, but she showed up on the screen, and we had, what, 45, 50 people even during COVID come and really talk about how we improve safety around transportation. That's what we're known for, and I think those are the kind of things, in addition to the visits and the strategies, that are going to position us to be successful pursuing these grants. From what I could see when I was back there with you guys, we were very well-regarded for actually improving the whole entire community of transportation and not just for ourselves. So just thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I really want to applaud the BIL team working towards this grant, particularly Franz Lohnhouse. He's been working on this way back, way back. I remember when we took the trip to, you know, to Europe, and which some of the council members recently did also. He's put so much effort on it, and he has committed such a cause and support that has been forthcoming. And I think finally, this is a great opportunity with this bilateral or bi, yeah, bill, the accord. So I just want to know, my question is, we're looking for $40 million, million dollars, but we know that this bill was given $400 million, as I think was earlier mentioned. Wow, that's a lot of money. So would there be other opportunity that we can actually go after? I know it's important to focus on something, so I'm really happy to hear, see the progress. I think, you know, we're so confident, I think we're going to get it. That's good. However, because what we're doing, we're actually connecting to federal government to infrastructure. We have a lot of other infrastructures that's important to, not just us, but for the east side, for the whole region. That's why it's a partnership program. Same thing with this program, you know, Safe Street. It's not just us, but it's the whole region. It's not even the whole region, maybe the whole country in a way, because we're setting a technology, and technology is what we're doing. So I'm just questioning, asking, what are we doing in terms of the relationship we're building? What other projects we may be considering? I know that one of the examples, Utility Department has all the assets, and we want to make sure the assets are going to be well-funded. We already provide replacement reserve ourselves, but I think it's important to have ability to even do more with technology that's working together, with Microsoft, for example. So if you can say a few words about that, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee, for that question. So just, I'll kick this off and then see if my colleagues want to add on anything I might have missed. So there are, as you said, myriad opportunities, and part of what is exciting about the BIL team and our intergovernmental relations team and how we work together is to really be well-prepared, as Councilmember Zahn said, well in advance of the notice of funding opportunity, but to have really laid an amazing foundation. There are, in addition to the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law that has both competitive grant opportunities, there's also a lot of formula funding that is flowing down through states and then through MPOs, and I know- And I know with transportation, I know Katie has been tracking a lot of that for the department. And then we're also really trying to create a little bit of a drumbeat with our delegation around how interested we are in taking advantage of a lot of the priorities that they have identified. What is great about BeSafe, why it's kind of a win-win, is it gave us the opportunity to visit and reestablish those relationships and hand them our federal agenda that you adopted later this spring to say, hey, these are the things that are important to Bellevue. We're here to talk to you about this today. We want to come back to you and talk to you about this. And by the way, thank you for that thing you did for us last year. So we want to make sure that we are doing that in a real, regular cadence and staying at the front of their mind as a great investment for these opportunities. And they also have been really clear with us that there are also the earmarks process, excuse me, congressionally-directed spending that has just come back into play in the last year and change. And so that's something we've been successful with already as well. And so we want to try to really do great matchmaking of the right types of funding and opportunity for us to leverage with that project pipeline and what's ready and well-poised so that we can really be smart and strategic. So there are a lot of aspects and a lot of layers, Councilmember Lee, which I think you're acknowledging. Katie, what did I miss?
You know, I'm at the risk of sounding a little trite. I want to respond, Councilmember Lee, by saying it's important not only to look at what we do qualify for, but also assessing what we just shouldn't spend the time or priority, prioritize on. For the number of different grant applications that have been out there, we really try to hone in on those that are the right fit for Bellevue at the right time with the right project, which sometimes means that there are other programs that we want to apply for, but that we have to consider the time commitment, the requirements, the federalization of a project. And so not only is it just as important to go for the federal funding, but also to know the limitations that we need to make so that we are in the right time and right space for those projects that we put forward. But it's a great question.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Good answers. The only thing I would like to add is that it'd be good for the council members and the mayor and we all know that we can maybe help you in some way to sort through some of the challenges, some of the, you know, requirements. I think that would be good. So I appreciate that information. And we should look forward to work together. Thank you.
Thank you. We've got four minutes left in our meeting. I have a question I want to ask. Does anybody else have a question or comment? Okay, I'm going to quickly just say, I heard while I was over there about the TFIYA loan that you can do to do affordable housing in TOD. And I would love you to come back sometime and tell me how that's going, if we're considering that and if you think that's something we might be able to utilize. Okay. On our agenda next is just a written presentation in our packet. We're not going to have any discussion, but if anybody has any pressing questions or comments about it, now's the time to ask staff. Not hearing any. Okay. Unfortunately, we are not going to be able to get to our Affordable Housing Tools update. And I really apologize to staff who sat here all night waiting for their moment. And I appreciate them very much. But this is too important to rush through. And so I think we're going to postpone that to another meeting. And with that, I'm going to call this meeting to an end. Thank you.